Hello, everyone. I call the Select Board meeting to order this evening, Tuesday, March 5th, at 7:03 PM. I'm looking for Mr. Gito. Oh, here he is. I miss you, sorry. Emotion.
Cellophane.
A motion to call the meeting to order, please.
So made.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, Mr. Gito.
I'm really here.
Okay, I'm glad of that. Mr. McCrisky?
Here.
Vice Chair Cave?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Yeah.
And I'm here. I ask all to stand if you are able to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 orders spending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. And with that said, there will be several items, one addition and an item taken out of order. What we'll do, because I was just informed tonight that Victor at Cedar Hill is unable to attend tonight, so that frees up some time, and we will have agenda items for citizens' comments and Select Board comments. The item that will also be taken out of order is Item 9B to accept a donation of $2,000. That will be considered at the same time we discuss Item 3 to establish a special account for homeowners heroes. And with that said, are there any Select Board comments? You're not going to do it. Any Select Board comments?
I didn't think we were going to have those, so I didn't. I'll have some later.
Okay. Town manager comment?
Madam Chair, I don't have any comments, but I do believe that when mistakes are made, apologies should be made in real time. So if you'll indulge me for a minute, I wrote a letter to our delegation, Representative Galvin, Representative Phillips, Representative Timmeltie, and our state senator, Walter Timmeltie. The purpose of the letter was to outline the deficits that our town is incurring as a result of the migrant population moving into the town of Stoughton. There was a longer letter, four-page letter, that preceded that, this letter, in great detail. I'm very pleased with the letter, except for the last sentence where I misspoke. And I'd like to read the letter and address the last sentence and then apologize for misleading anybody. So to you, Madam Chair. The letter was dated February 28th. It said, "Good afternoon, gentlemen. As you perhaps know, Stoughton is the sixth-largest host community of migrants in the Commonwealth. We are the largest host community of all towns. We are proud hosts and do our best to be welcoming to the migrant community. However, this honor brings with it many challenges. I wrote to each of you on February 16th, '24 regarding several unintended consequences suffered by host communities. See attached. We now need to discuss mitigation with the Healy-Driscoll administration. How will we be made whole on lost room taxes? How can we address the use of ambulances as taxi service? How do we get reimbursements for the town's downtime waiting for patients to be accepted at Good Samaritan ER? Our ambulances are often out of service at the hospital for up to three hours and we oftentimes, excuse me, and we occasionally, I wrote, as we hire private companies to cover Stoughton calls. We receive dozens of calls per month from migrant community requesting transport for headaches, toothaches, sore throats, and upset stomachs. The purpose of this letter is to request that the Lieutenant Governor visit Stoughton to meet with our community leaders. We would appreciate an update on the state's response to our lost revenues resulting from the loss of room taxes. During that meeting, we will be asking for the funding needed to convert the train station into a community center." So before I read to you the last sentence, I want to explain to you the background in that. We applied for a $4 million grant to rebuild our train station. We met every criteria laid out by the state, and we did not get the grant. They admit they made a mistake. So in this last sentence, I regrettably tried to tie in our goodwill towards the migrant community into the injustice served on us in not getting funded for the train station. So in the last sentence, I inappropriately wrote, "Which will be used to integrate our migrant population into our community. I look forward to hearing back from you." As you know, Madam Chair, the internet has exploded with people rightfully upset that the implication is that the train station was going to be for migrant community. The train station is for a Stoughton community center. What I was trying to do in this letter is say, if you can't give us the funding in the state budget for the purpose that you should be giving us the funding, at least reward us by giving us the $4 million. We've accepted gracefully the migrant community. At least allow us to build a community center. That was my intent. I clearly admit the last sentence implied it was to build a migrant community center, and I apologize to the community for that. That was never my intent. I certainly never want to be the reason that Facebook blows up or the internet blows up, but that last sentence could have been and should have been worded quite differently, and for that I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Coulter. The only comment that I have, which is on another topic, it's the Massachusetts Select Board Association. That's affiliated with the Massachusetts Municipal Association. So I was re-elected as first vice president, and within that regard, we completed the handbook. So that is the Select Board Handbook, and I just wanted to mention that several of our community members are included in the handbook. So one is John Antravino and Mrs. Cynthia Walsh. It's in Chapter 2 of the handbook. It's under the section labeled "Public Decision Making and Community Engagement," and it has a tagline under it by saying, "A Stoughton resident speaks at a Select Board meeting." So I thought that was good. It was really a nice picture of Antravino, Mrs. Walsh, and some others at a Select Board meeting. The other is under Chapter 4 of the handbook, under is our town manager, Mr. Coulter. It's under the section Administrative and Regulatory Responsibilities, and it says, "Tom Coulter speaks at a Select Board Strategic Planning Retreat Meeting." So if you get a chance, please visit the handbook on the MMA website and see the write-up of the guidebook and the pictures that I just mentioned. And that's all I had. If there are no other Select Board meetings, we can move right along to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Yes, Mrs. Walsh.
It's always Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street, Precinct 23. It's always nice to be included positively. Thank you. Mr. Gito and I were both at the Finance Committee hearings that started last week, and one thing that caught my attention was the number of grants that department heads had sought and received and would seek in the future. You all know that the first few articles of Town Meeting are always to accept state and federal funding, and they're called routine articles. And if we're not doing it already, I think we should ask the Finance Committee to include a page in the back of their book amongst the hundreds of the grants that departments have achieved in Fiscal 23 and so far in Fiscal 24. I'm thinking of engineering. I'm also thinking of economic development. I think folks... I don't know what's going on. Wait a second. I'm hoping that I'm coming in all right. Yes, we can hear you. I think folks, well, Town Meeting representatives as well as the general public might be surprised to know how many projects I see around town that are actually not being paid for by the Stoughton taxpayer. Well, a little bit, because we all pay state and federal taxes, but it shows the willingness of our town employees to go the extra mile. If you've ever filled out any of these grant forms, they're not one-pagers. They're multiple pages, and they require an extensive background, especially when we do something like an intersection. How many fatalities? How many accidents? How many people went to the hospital? What kind of accidents? Head-on, rear-end, T-bone? I mean, it's page after page after page. So they have to coordinate with the fire department. They have to coordinate with the police department. Now, I realize a lot of that's done by clerical staff, but I think that we should recognize the extra efforts of all staff to make sure that as many of the available grant dollars come to Stoughton before they go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Walsh. Are there any other citizens' comments? With that being none, we'll jump right into Item Number 2, Department Head Mid-Year Presentations. Engineering/Development Services is up first. Economic Development is next, and then Water and Sewer is next. Hello there.
Hello. Could I make one recommendation?
Yes.
I'm going to be here for most of the night. Would it be okay to take Economic Development and then Water and Sewer first?
Absolutely, you can.
And then we can come get them out of here?
Yes.
Unless they want to stick around. I don't know.
They may just want to stay.
Hello, nice to see you again.
Hello. Thank you for that, Mark. I don't think people realize how many departments are actually under Development Services, so Mark will need a little bit more time than me. So if you don't know, I'm Pam McCarthy, the Economic Development Director, and I'm here to give my mid-year report. So we got a form, so I'll go by that, just showing the order of things that you requested. So the first part is for accomplishments performed during July 1st, 2023, and December 31st, 2023. Number 1 is the Municipal Aggregation/Stoughton Community Choice Power Program. As of October, this program has saved the town's residents and small businesses over 2.2 million on electricity bills. In November, I oversaw the transition to the new three-year program with the same third-party supplier, Direct Energy. Having this in place will avoid spikes for the next three years. As of right now, the Stoughton program rate is 14 cents per kilowatt hour, and national grid is 18 cents per kilowatt hour, so people are still saving money right now. The second accomplishment I want to mention is the fact that I started a new position as the Grant Manager for the town departments in order to monitor opportunities available to local government, coordinate the town's efforts, and offer guidance to departments that are looking for project funding or are in the process of writing their own grant applications. So all along, I've written my own grant applications and assisted with some other departments, but there's a need for coordination. For example, there are some programs at the state that you might have multiple departments want to apply to for similar grants, and you end up cannibalizing each other, so you need to know what each other is doing. So under this category, I will continue to write applications myself for projects related to economic development and for other projects that I've been asked to assist with. For example, I helped with the Permit Tracking Grant, and recently I got an ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Grant and a Financial Policies and Procedures Manual Grant. Once I got the funding for these two projects, I was able to get the consultants in place. We're going to use the Collins Center at UMass Boston. We got the contracts signed, and now the projects are moving forward. We've already had kickoff meetings, and now the department heads will take over for those two projects, for the ADA project and the financial policies and procedures. In order to try to keep track of everything, I put together a form for the different department heads to fill out, which so far I've gotten 19 responses, as to which active and pending grants that they have right now. Then that connects to a Google spreadsheet, so after I get it a little bit more complete, I'll be able to share that Google spreadsheet online so all the departments can see what each other is doing. You'll be able to look at it and see what we have for grants, what's pending, and so will the community. In addition to the state grants, I'm also responsible now for requesting state and federal earmarks, working with the town manager and Mark and other department heads, and federal grants. For community projects, I still reach out to the Stoughton Bank Consortium that I founded a few years ago in order to get some funding. They actually helped fund things like the Community Beer Garden, the Martin Luther King Day and Juneteenth projects, and the holiday lights that we had, they helped fund. So in order to educate myself more about what's available out there, I've signed up for webinars today. They had one for MAPC that had three different grant programs that are available right now, and Senator Markey's office offered a webinar for staff that will actually discuss the earmark process. And I've gone to meetings with Secretary Augustus, who's in charge of the Housing, Secretary it Now, and Secretary Howe. So a lot of it is doing research, which I'm working on. Another accomplishment is that I have been assisting a lot of business owners as well as developers and property owners lately. I get inquiries on a regular basis from both. Some of the businesses that have shown an interest in Stoughton, that have held joint meetings with Development Services for and seem to be moving forward is, there's a Fortune 500 medical device company that should be moving into the community in the next few months, and once that is, all paperwork is done, I'll be able to share that information. There's another equipment leasing company that is working to come into Stoughton, and a brewery that we met with today, also a couple of doctor's offices and a new restaurant. That's just a few. And besides businesses, I've had a lot of interest from developers and property owners. I set up a couple of meetings with two developers that were interested in doing housing projects in the downtown because they wanted to see what was out there for financial assistance. It's hard right now because the banks are not lending as easily as they used to because the interest rates are high. So I had meetings with them in Mass Development where they learned about different bond programs, a loan guarantee program, and they also offer direct financing for smaller projects. And then finally, one of the accomplishments, I helped to coordinate two successful events. I worked quite a bit on the Legislative Breakfast we had in August and the Housing Public Firm that we just had, that was really well-attended and well-received. For those, I helped get the background information prepared for Secretary Ash and the legislators, made them aware of the town's priorities, prepared the meeting materials, and conducted some pre-event meetings. And then in another role as the legislative liaison, I've been following up with all of our legislators in order to see what the status is of the assistance that they had promised us and to also ask for additional assistance. My future goals for January 2024 through June 2024 are, number one, as the Grant Manager, to continue to assist the town departments as they apply for grants, to fund priority projects. Some of the grant applications that I'll be helping with in the next few weeks are, we're going to be applying for a grant to update our housing production plan. Also, our Open Space and Recreation Plan is going to be outdated as of May, so that's another project we're looking into funding. And then also, the town manager had mentioned the Train Depot Grant. We were rejected for several reasons that were not warranted, and I was encouraged to apply again to the next round, which will be opening in the next couple of months, to try once again to get assistance for the rehab in order to convert that into a community center. And then I'll continue to get the department heads to give me information so that I can get that spreadsheet up to date and everybody can see what grants we have. And I took note of Cynthia Walsh's request that we put that information out there to Town Meeting, what grants we have right now and what we're looking for, and if the town manager thinks that's something we should do, I'll put that together. And also, another note is, as far as the grants are concerned, another key part of it is what Mary Jane Martin, our internal auditor, does. Not only do we have to keep track of what we're applying for and what we've gotten, but we have to have the accounts set up so that when the money comes in, people aren't saying, "We have a check for $50,000. Where does it go?" So that's very important for her to be able to set up the accounts, track the money, track the invoices that are spent, so we're trying to get better at having that coordinated. And then, as I said, as the legislative liaison, I'm going to continue to pursue assistance for our priority projects, and those include the rehab of the Train Depot and to the conversion of the community center. Quiet Zone mitigation, that's where we are looking for safety improvements for our railroad crossings in order to reach that objective. Housing development, see if there's money out there for that in our downtown, including affordable housing. The relocation of the post office, that project's not dead. We're still working with our legislators to see if there's something that we can do about that. PFAS mitigation is something that there's not really funding for right now, but I'm told that there might be in the future. That's important to our community. And then finally, under that, they're supposed to be putting together a new authority at the state, like they had the school building authority. They're working on putting together a public safety building authority, so if that does happen, we want to make sure that, you know, we're at the top of the line for assistance for our police station. And then the last two things I just had was continue to work with the businesses and the developers, which is something that I've always done. That's one of my number-one jobs. And then finally, when Secretary Ash was here, he made multiple recommendations as to different types of programs and incentives we could look into to help attract housing developments. And also, I had been to some meetings with the current secretary, Secretary Augustus, and he also had some recommendations. So I just need to take the time to go through those and figure out what makes sense for the town of Stoughton and see what we can do. There was a section for comments, but really the only thing I wanted to say was trying to do these two jobs, economic development and the grant management. But I also am still working on the municipal aggregation, and I'm also, I'm the technical advisor for the Friends of Stoughton Center. I'm assisting with planning activities, like reviewing the urban renewal plan. And I have that app still. I'd like to make a plug for the Discover Stoughton Mass app that has the business directory on there. If any businesses out there aren't listed on it yet, please contact me. I still get contacted on a regular basis. We only have about 1,000 users right now. It'd be great if we could increase that, but that's something that's for free. You just have to go to your phone's store that you get apps on, and that's a great resource because it also connects to the town. Like, it has the listing of all of your contact information, town news, multiple things that are on the website that people can also just access on their phone. So that's an update of what I'm working on and what I'm going to concentrate on in the next six months. Did anyone have any questions?
Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Pam.
Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Pam. Just on two points that you made, you mentioned the post office.
Right.
This board, a couple of years ago, took a formal vote to not enter into any conversation, any further conversation regarding that issue. Why did this pop up?
So when we had the Legislative Breakfast with Congressman Lynch, he actually had discussed the fact that the atmosphere is changing with the post office, and he might be able to set up some type of a meeting for us to discuss the project. That's really all that we're at right now. I remember the vote because I was the one who got all of that information together and spent a long time trying to convince the post office to relocate. And I believe the way that we worded it was that, as of right now, unless things changed in the future, we weren't going to pursue the project anymore. So it's really more trying to make contact and see if there are any possible changes right now. There isn't really anything else going on at this time.
I would want that to come back to this board again for a formal vote. If the congressman feels it's worth a discussion, we'll definitely oblige our congressman, so he may be able to get that project moving in the right way. But before we make any real decisions, I'd like that to come back so that it gets endorsed as we took a formal vote to end it. I believe it should get a formal vote to redo it, which I'm all in favor of what you're doing now.
Okay.
The second one is on the urban renewal plan.
Right.
How much are you doing for that? We haven't endorsed an urban renewal plan for the town, the Select Board. I know it's being worked on. I have some minor concerns with town employees doing work for other entities that have not been, you know, that this board hasn't endorsed.
So...
So just give me an idea of what you're doing to that level.
Okay. So as far as that plan is concerned, nobody's doing work for the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. It's in our role as town employees. So when the urban renewal plan was first started, was when I started working here. So I actually attended the meetings on behalf of the town and exchanged information. I let the town manager at the time know what was happening at those meetings, if there were requests to get information from the planning department, things like that. I coordinated exchanges of information and let the town know what was going on. And then during the process of the urban renewal plan, the different departments were asked to review information, to give their comments, and to make changes, things that we thought were incorrect. So because I've been a part of that process for, I think, seven or eight years now, I probably have among the most knowledge of what they've been trying to do with that plan. So what I did was, before it went to the planning board, I looked at the urban renewal plan, compared it to the master plan, and wrote down, I think it was four or five pages of inconsistencies between the two. They addressed those inconsistencies, and now they have a revised plan that they're working on, which I know that they still have to get approved by the Select Board. So basically, that was my role, making the comparisons because I knew what was in the master plan and what didn't match up, and I made my recommendations. And they actually were very receptive. They actually had made quite a few changes, and it wasn't just me. Mark Tisdale had spent a lot of time reviewing it, and the new town planner and the town manager were involved in the process, too.
Okay. We're the policymaking board, and if it's going to be something that affects a policy by this board, we should have a say in this. Okay? Because I know there's a lot, and I'll get to you, Tom. I was going to ask you the same thing, because there's been a lot of board meetings with people that are saying, "Please endorse this. Please endorse this." And we still have not even said if we're interested in it.
Right.
So, Tom, if you want to take that?
Yeah, I think I can clarify it, Joe, very briefly. It's the term vetting. You are the policymaking boards, the policymaking board of the community. We've not only recognized that, we truly respect that, but it's our responsibility to fully vet things before they come to this board so that they're accurate, so that they're aligned. If we ever passed an urban renewal plan or endorsed it, and it was in conflict with the master plan, we would be in great difficulty in terms of state funding, which is given only when you're complying with your own master plan. So we see it as our job, and I think you would agree, I think all would agree, it's not our job to make decisions. not our job to make decisions, but it is our job to fully vet so that the information you have in front of you is correct, it's cohesive, it's aligned. And so when it comes to you, you're not finding all types of inconsistencies in it, and you can make an informed decision. In terms of the post office, if I may, on the post office, they used to be a full distribution center. They're not anymore. Randolph has opened a distribution center. That is a very small distribution center, and really, it's just the retail storefront that is the major source of business. Recently, my former roommate in the legislature, Marty Walsh, was appointed to be chairman of the Board of Governors for the United States Postal Service. So now the postmaster general, who has become friends with Congressman Lynch, and his boss, who's the governor of the, the chairman of the Board of Governors, Marty Walsh, are now very receptive to what the town of Stoughton may want to do. If there's an opportunity that the congressman and the former Biden Cabinet Secretary Walsh create for us, clearly, 10 out of 10 times, that opportunity would be brought before this board for decision.
Right. I remember the conversation with the congressman.
Right.
Well, the meeting we had, so that was less, but the, but with the urban renewal plan, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? If this board essentially votes it down, that's a lot of town work being done that won't go anywhere. And I would rather have the board say, "We're interested in discussing it based on these preliminary ideas." But there's been a lot of work behind it with, I think, trying to package it to bring to the Board of Selectmen. If we're going to do something like that, it should be a dialogue between the policymaker boards, this board, and the other ones that are out now doing the work, so that we know we're all in this thing together, we're interested, let's vet it, you know, let's see what it is. But I'm just concerned with, you know, hearing how many things are going on. And I agree, we want to vet everything. But if the policymaking board is not willing to engage in a conversation regarding that subject matter, why are we wasting our employees' time?
Madam Chair, let me answer that, if I may.
Yes, please.
If it came to you months ago in its first draft, this board would have spent 10 meetings discussing the many conflicts between our master plan and the urban renewal plan. I believe, and if the board wishes to change this approach, I'm open to that, of course, I believe that the policymakers need to have an A document before it reaches your desk, so that you can make an informed policy decision, not be negotiating the grammatical or the substantive conflicts between the proposed and its proposed urban renewal plan and our master plan. At least you should have the benefit of a complete, finished, cohesive document.
I think we're going on the same issue, but just what should come first? Because I still don't know why we're doing it, how we're going to do it, how we're going to pay for it, and how it's going to benefit the taxpayers of Stoughton.
Sure.
If we can't get an answer to those four questions, we shouldn't be wasting our employees' time, because they could be doing some work on things that we can accomplish as municipal government.
That comment, I completely agree with. Perhaps hindsight being 2020, we should have asked the urban renewal plan to come and answer those questions.
Well, they made a presentation, but still, those four simple questions have never been answered yet.
That's a fair point.
So, I mean, and I, like I said...
It's a fair point.
The, the work that the staff has been doing since you've been here is, you know, it's nice to have somebody let them off the chain and do what they're talented in doing. One of those biggest successes is what we'll hear about tonight, is the doing of the fire station. You know, that, that was a home run, got knocked out of the ballpark and then into the highway. So I just want to make these points, because I've always been very concerned with the authority of the policymaking board, and to make sure that we're at least, we know what's going on, at what levels. And it would, if I knew that, I probably wouldn't have brought up the question that said, "Why are we talking about the post office again?" It was a very heated exchange at a meeting because they were just not connected to us. They didn't even know the address of the building we were talking about. They had it as Washington Street. So, I mean, there was just a disconnect, and why do we waste our time talking to somebody that just has zero connection? So, and I do agree that when we met with the congressman and our delegation, there was a breath of fresh air on the issue. So, but you know where I'm coming from, you know my thought process.
Certainly.
Is that when you're the policymaking board, the last thing you want to do is hear about something after it's been done.
Right. Point taken.
Thank you very much for your update, and I concur. But what I was wondering is, Mr. Carrera and Vice Chair Cavey are our liaisons to the SRA, and it did go through that process, is that correct? You attended the meetings, and that was the preliminary first step? So that is the first step in the process of vetting. Is that a true statement?
Can you put that on mute, please, if you can?
The least tonight.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrera, please correct me if anything I say, if you have a different recollection. But my, we've met with the, with the members of the SRA numerous times over the past year. We've mostly discussed the programming itself, some of the specifics of a new renewal plan, some of the priorities of it. This was an effort for, I think in this case, for the SRA to get a chance to speak to members of the select board, so they didn't come to us with things that we would offhandedly reject, and get, sort of get our initial input. And so we provided that input as best we could. We, and I think there was a lot of really wonderful conversations, and the members of the SRA that we worked with are outstanding people, so I appreciate the work they did. Once that was done, once we kind of talked through some of the things we wanted, there was a separate phase that had to take place where, once the plans developed, it had to be reconciled with our, with our master plan. And that's done through the planning board, if I'm not mistaken, with our town planner leading the charge on that. So there were a number of issues with it at that, at that stage, where they've gone to constant back and forth, and they've worked through the details. I'm actually not exactly sure where that currently stands, if it's been voted by the planning board or not. But I did, when I spoke with the town planner, I asked, and he was happy to oblige, that our role in this wouldn't move forward until we got the all-clear from the planning board and from the town planner. So, so really, at this point, we've provided some input. The planning board and the town planner are going through their work to just make sure that we're in compliance, and that we are, that we have documents that agree with one another and don't contradict one another. And after that, that there would be an opportunity for them to present it to us, to actually vote on collectively on the merits of that, of that request.
Madam Chair, that's what I meant to say.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone.
Mr. Carrera, you feel that's a true assessment?
I, I agree with Steve. We, we met, we had some wicked good candid conversations, we looked at a lot of angles, we came up with some stuff, it got laid out, we reviewed it, we had to send some stuff back in another meeting and figure out what was going to be the 1 to 5, 5 to 10, and go that way, and then lay that out, and like Steve says, give it to the planning board and see how they could take it from there and match it up and not conflict with the master plan. That's, that's, unfortunately, that's the mothership, and I know we've had a few master plans since I've been back here. So it's probably going to take a little time so that they can be reconciled with the town planner, because he's, he's a little up on stuff more than all of us. So that's kind of where it is.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carrera. And I guess one final note, and I'm connecting the dots for everyone. Your role is to make sure that whatever the SRA is developing is in agreement with the master plan, because that impacts your grant writing. Because if it doesn't agree with the master plan, it hinders our success with grant writing. But you could add clarity to that.
Yes, that can happen, but I just want to remind the board that one reason why I was so involved with the urban renewal plan was because I was the acting town planner when Mark Zamanian reached out to the planning board to present it. We had three new planning board members that were not familiar with the master plan or the urban renewal plan. And then after that, we had a new town planner come on. So I had to do an extensive comparison just to get the planning board members and the new town planner up to speed. So that's one of the other things that you might not realize is, that was just helping out the planning board so that they could do their evaluation.
Thank you very much for clarity. And, Mr. Gito, the way, the angle that I'm sitting, I'm sitting so close, and with the wires and the lights, I can't really see you. So now, do you have any comments? I just want to make, you want to turn on your light?
No, I don't. I don't want to turn it on.
Oh, because it interferes? Okay, I can see you much better.
There you go.
Yeah, that does make a difference. Thank you. It's the lighting and everything. Thank you. Did you have any comments?
I do.
Thank you.
Pam, you have an awful lot on your plate. And I guess my question is, I don't know how you have time to do it all, and is there anything that, that you could use help on from either other people in the community that may have particular skills and time to, to help you with? Or if you have some other ideas on, on how you could get all of this stuff done? I mean, when I, I didn't get writer's cramp, writing all the different tasks you have here, but, but you've got a lot of them, and they are very diverse, and they're all important.
Well, I still, even though I'm not technically in development services anymore, my regular economic development job deals a lot with businesses and developers, so I still work with them on those things. I'm not on my own on a lot of those things. And then as far as the grants, I mean, this is a new role, so I guess it's just people will have to be a little bit patient, because there's a lot of research to be done, there's a lot of departments to assist. And there'll be times when I have to drop everything because there's a deadline coming up. So as long as people can understand that I'll have to set my priorities in order to get the things done that have the deadlines, then I think we'll be okay. And as long as the departments are able to just cooperate, which they have been, and giving me information, I can best help them if they can help me out by letting them know what their needs are. So as far as help, if I need some, I'll ask for it. I'm sure the town manager can, and Mark can find a way to assist if it comes to that point.
I'm not talking about getting paid staff. I'm thinking about finding people within the community that have experience in the areas that you're dealing with. And, I mean, there are a lot of folks here who are younger than I, but still perhaps retired.
Right.
That have a wealth of experience. And many of them would, or at least some of them, would like to be able to contribute. And I guess my, my suggestion would be to spend a little bit of time writing down what things you might be able to, to get help with, and what, what skills you need in order to, to get that work accomplished. And, and we could go out and start recruiting for volunteer help.
I appreciate that. I'm always open to suggestions from the community, so if anybody wants to contact me, they can feel free to do that, and I'll appreciate that.
I think you need to do a little bit in terms of defining the kinds of help that you might want.
Okay.
And start from there and, and move out. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Thank you very much. And if there are no other questions, yes?
I think it just should be noted that Pam has become, has always been, extraordinary asset to this town. Doing these two jobs is particularly helpful. One of the things she doesn't brag about, but that I want to mention here now, because I believe that humility is a big part of contrition, she writes all the first drafts of the letters that I send to congressmen, state senators, state reps, looking for money. Just for the record, the only one she did not draft, because she was at her daughter's wedding, was the one for which I apologize this evening. I just thought you should know that.
I won't take credit for that one, no. And, is that it?
That's it. Thank you for all you do, and I think it's always a good idea to come before the board and talk about the things that you do, so we know, so, because we want to applaud you. We want to give you a pat on the back, because we value what you do.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. I think the next is engineering, development services, water and sewer. Okay. Okay, let's take water and sewer next. Hello, how are you? So, we do have the leadership report that you sent out, everyone sends out, so please start, introduce yourself, and so the community gets a chance to know you.
Good evening, Phil McNulty, Water and Sewer Superintendent. So as far as reviewing accomplishments for the last nine months, I'm going to mention a couple of water main projects, what I call, what is called Phase Four and Phase Five. Phase Four is now complete. You've probably seen it if you're driving around, it's Prospect Street, Knowles, Camille and Henry, and then a loop between Greenwood and Copperwood condos. That should probably be either in the spring or the fall, be followed up with the, in coordination with the DPW's paving program. Phase Five is designed, it's, it's the roads Charles, Donald, Greenwood, Leach, Walnut Court, and a, a section of Page Street that loops to the recycling facility. Also, as an alternative to that design is Tosca Drive, if the money allows. The bid opening for that project is this Thursday, so we'll see how that goes. That project there was approved, if you recall, back in November of 2023 town meeting. Next up is Muddy Pond PFAS Treatment, that is now 99%, designed. The submittal is due to DEP in June. We're probably looking at late summer, early fall construction to begin on that plant. Kind of following in the same footsteps, but a year behind, is Pratt's Court PFAS. We did a performance evaluation, submittal to the state, and we did make the IUP, which is the Intended Use Plan. What that means is that it's going to allow us up to 38% grant and 0% interest loans to, to perform that project. And that's, allows us to move forward with town meeting on that project. So it's, you know, it's up to town meeting, if that moves forward. As far as goals for the upcoming year, the upcoming three months here on the list, is the Phase Five Water Mains, which I mentioned earlier, will begin construction, we'll go through the notice of award and, and notice to proceed procurement process. So the Phase, Phase Five Water Mains this summer, we're going to contract out 4,400 residential water meters to install and complete that project 100% in the next six to nine months. And also, we're going to complete the water and sewer building security measures, basically just adding to the security of the, of the water and sewer stations. Finally, on my list, I'm just, we've done a number of water, well, rather sewer pump station upgrades, and, and those are 99% complete for York Street and Royal Road, as of now, just punch list items remaining. And as far as comments, on the, on the bottom here, I have listed, continue to coordinate with the, the water main projects with the paving program as, as, as designed and intended, so that we can, you know, make sense out of that the best we can in terms of, before we pave, making sure the infrastructure below ground is as good as we can get it. Also, continue with the INI program, it's, it's kind of in a cyclical, cyclical process for the last 20 years, investigate, design, and construct the structural and/or infiltration that we find. So, other than that, it's just remaining compliance regulatory-wise in terms of, you know, bacteria... know, bacteria and all the chemicals that we test for the state. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? None, Mr. Gito. Any questions, Vice Chair? Good, thank you. A thorough report. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Phil.
Yes. Hi, Mark, how are you?
Just because there's so much complexity with Development Services, I thought it'd be easier to put the PowerPoint on the screen here so everybody can see. There's a chart I have on here that describes what Development Services is.
Perfect. Thank you.
I got paper copy. You want a paper copy? I got some printouts for you over there. I did have a short amount of time I could prepare this presentation, so I did my best for my several departments here. All right. That's not the right one. It's orange. There you go. That one. Yep. I just saw it. Right from Craig there. Okay, that's good enough. That works. Just scroll so you could max my size. Good job, Jillith. That was good on the fly right there. Very good. All right, Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Development Services. With you tonight, we're doing our mid-year report for Development Services. I'll explain to everybody, I know most of the board knows exactly what Development Services is, but for the public watching, we'd like to just describe what Development Services and the departments involved in it, just so there's no confusion, because it's a relatively new restructure as of a few years ago. Next slide. We live and die by this mission statement. This is a mission statement that took a lot of work and effort to put in place for Development Services, and it really means a lot. It's not something that's just a paragraph on a website. The mission of Development Services is to build and maintain a strong and effective group of departments that remain focused on providing superior customer service to the town of Stoughton, its residents, the general public, the development community, and all town departments, while maintaining a positive relationship in all our interactions, as well as a professional work environment. That's real important. Our group will partner with the development community to encourage and ensure a development process that is proficient, reasonable, and predictable while promoting the economic growth, safety, usability, and sustainability of our town. Being in the private sector before, I worked here for 15 years, going to a lot of different towns, not having a predictable, proficient, and reasonable permitting process really stinks. And it really drives developers to go to other towns and do their business there. And it, for the residents who want to put additions on or build houses, it's just a roadblock. So we really try to make it the most efficient process possible. Next slide. This is the org chart for the departments. Development Services consists of several departments and divisions. Starting to the left, we have an esteemed GIS coordinator, the best one in Massachusetts, maybe New England. He is a division of Development Services. We have our Board of Health Department that consists of a couple great employees. In the Board of Health, actually, three employees, excuse me. We have our Engineering Department. We have a Planning Department that's really got a fantastic town planner that we recently hired this year. He's a rock star. He's got many, many years of experience, and we're lucky to have him. We have a Building Department with a great building commissioner and great staff to support him. Code Enforcement is a part of the Building Department. We have a great code enforcement manager, very diligent. He's always out in the field. He's firm, you know, a firm person. He's not arrogant, and he's not too soft. He's right in the middle, which is great for a code enforcement officer. He does a great job at what he does. We also have weights and measures now, as you may recall in the budget talks. And also, we have Conservation Commission and Environmental Affairs underneath the Development Services wing. Next chart, we don't have to talk about this chart. You've seen it through the budget process, but this just shows you all the employees. It's the same chart you just saw, but it breaks it down by employees within Development Services. All right, next page. This year, we've had some accomplishments to date for the overall Development Services, and hopefully with some Town Meeting approvals, we can complete the process. First of all, is online permitting. We now have a fully executed contract. We've had kickoff meetings. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work going on with online permitting right now, so that everything works seamlessly with assessing in different departments. What was that look, Scott? You're giving me that look over there. It's going to be good, I promise. For even people that aren't good with computers, they're going to love it, all right? So that's moving. So we're going to work, we're going to design it for people who are very good with computers, and for not with computers, we'll have a computer actually right outside our office, outside, where we will have some staff help people who may not have the skill set to properly submit permits like Scott. So, all right. So that's online permitting, just to know, that's Phase One. We're starting off with the Building Department, Fire, and Board of Health. Those departments, we're designing those modules right now. Licensing Services, as you know, as part of this budget season, we've restructured licensing to come into Development Services, work with all the departments in Development Services as they do now. Licensing pretty much needs sign-offs from Building Department, Board of Health, sometimes Engineering, sometimes Planning, for every license that comes through the Select Board. The entity's always upstairs, that person's always upstairs, you know, talking to us. We're having meetings about licenses. So the restructure, I think that the Select Board endorsed through the budgeting season is going to be great for the residents and people doing business in town. The Assistant Director of Development Services position was created in the budget this year, endorsed by your Select Board. Seems to be a positive restructure of our department, just for succession planning. In case I get hit by a bus, who knows? Could happen.
Or win the lottery.
What's that?
Or win the lottery.
Exactly. Yes, yes. I like that thought. So our esteemed Assistant Town Engineer is in a position where for a few years now, he's always been my wingperson, you know, always there for me, behind the scenes, very quiet, but really, without him, I can't get my job done. He really knows the intricacies of all the departments, how they work. He doesn't just help me out with engineering, he helps me out with everything I need, without complaining. So this year, you endorse that restructure. It's good for succession planning. So Craig is proposed to be the Assistant Director of Development Services. We also are in the process of finalizing all department fees, just for a lot of different reasons, but specifically, when we go live with online permitting, we don't want to have to revise the fees like a month after we go live. We want everything to be good for about five years, you know, so we don't have to go back into the modules and change all the information. That will be in front of your board very soon. Next slide. Traffic Projects. I'll go through this real quick. I know most of you are familiar with this. I know the public may not be familiar with it. And we will post, Mr. Gito, this presentation on the website.
Great. Thank you.
And the public can go and view that. As you know, we're very active with traffic projects in the last few years. The Canton School Street, Tosca Drive intersection project, which has, was permitted through DOT, it's a DOT project. The notice to proceed was issued to the contractor, and it will be starting this spring, summer of this year, after many years of Town Meeting articles trying to get that done. So we appreciate the board's endorsement and all the community for supporting those articles. The Route 138 Corridor Project, Phase One, the budget for that's $8.7 million. That's a grant that we've gotten through the state tip program. The notice proceed for that is actually, it's probably going to be later this year. It won't be, I believe, spring, but it will be summer, maybe fall of this year. We don't have the exact schedule in front of us just yet from DOT. Safe Routes to School, Wilkins Elementary School, as you can tell, that's under construction now. The project's in its final phase. There'll be final paving and striping this year, and that project will be complete. That was $2.6 million grant that we were able to achieve through the tip process. Projects in Design Planning Phase is Phase Two of the Route 138 Corridor Project. We have the intersection of Park Street, Turnpike Street, that Town Meeting approved a few years back. We're going to try to get that programmed on the tip in the future. That's in the design process as we speak. The Canton School Street, Summer Street intersection, the budget for that's $4.2 million. We were successful in getting that programmed on the FY28 tip, and we're well in the design process now. There's actually a Town Meeting article to amend the current contract due to some mass DOT changes with signalizing Cushing Street. Turnpike Street Realignment, that's a project that's been around since I started. It's in the design phase with DOT now. The budget for that's $43 million at this point. I don't know how they're going to budget it or how we get that done, but once the design progresses a little bit, we want to continue the project moving forward. And really, we'll probably need a team approach on how we tackle that, actually getting built. We secured a grant recently for Complete Streets Priority Plan. We had a traffic priority plan a few years back, and if you look at it now, most of those projects are either the ones we just talked about or completed. So now it's time to refresh our priority plan for traffic projects in town, and that's a grant that we applied for $38,000 and received. So that will be our next five to 10 years of traffic priorities that we'll have in town. It'll be a lot of public outreach, survey monkeys, things like that, to get the public's input on our next traffic priority plan. There's a Pine &amp; Pleasant Street intersection improvement design we're working on now. Town Meeting approved that last year. That's, design's underway. We also, very soon, will be presenting a few different concepts to you regarding the Town Hall landscaping and parking improvements for the article that was approved at Town Meeting last year. They look pretty sharp, I got to tell you. They look, I think everybody will be pretty proud of this. Might not be proud of the cost, but you're going to be proud of how the plans look at this point. So, next slide. I'll go through this quick, as everybody is familiar with the South Stoughton Sewer Expansion Project. Construction's very near complete. The pump station should be completed in the next month or two. There'll be testing and things of that nature, and it should be live within three or four months. After it's live, people in that area, for that portion of the sewer can tie in. We've had a lot of people coming to the front desk, especially companies in the industrial park looking to tie into the sewer. We've had already six or seven, this says six, residential connections on the gravity portion of the sewer project. So people are connecting. There's 70-plus properties on there, so six are already tied in. There's probably a handful of businesses that have reached out, and they will be tying in as soon as it's active. Stormwater projects, we have underway of Year Two of the townwide hydraulic and hydrologic study for flooding in town. There's been a lot of public forums on that. You've probably seen them posted on Facebook. That's also going to be our map for the next five or 10 years on how we address culverts in town and large pipes that carry stormwater and drainage. That'll be a working document that we utilize for future. There's an EPA Technical Assistance Grant for stormwater that we received for, I believe, $15,000, which will come up with a nice manual that our DPW workers can utilize in their trucks on how to maintain every type of structure we have in town, which we are required to do per the MS4 permit. There'll also be one specific basin that will have the DPW out there with the EPA, and we'll invite everybody to go out there and see how you maintain a detention basin. Exciting stuff, huh? You like that? So, and then in-house, our engineers, Craig Horstfall and Nick DeFrain, our project engineer, designed an infiltration basin for some drainage improvements we had with Westwood Road and Winfiski Road. There was some serious flooding going on. The drainage system in the road was not functioning, it was overflowing and washing out into somebody's yard and eroding their yard. Instead of coming to Town Meeting with an article, which we were planning on doing, we were able to complete that design in-house. Our DPW actually constructed it, very impressed with their construction, looks solid. Looks like we hired a private contractor to do the work. Other Town Projects, Halloran Park Multi-Use Courts, we've been helping Matt with the design and bid documents on that. That's actually out to bid as we speak. Bird Street Trail Improvements, you're familiar with that. That project's, the trail portion of that project's pretty much complete. We're working on the parking lot portion. Cape &amp; Reynolds, the gardens and the dog park, we've assisted with the design bidding and the grant applications through that. From a Board of Health standpoint and environmental affairs, we had Hazard Waste Day that we completed in September and coordinated by James Collin, who is an expert at coordinating that event. He's been doing it for years. He's done a great job, and I know he's in the process of planning another one. The Seals of Weights and Measures duties, as we talked about, is now under our control. Our esteemed Assistant Board of Health Agent, Sean Leahy, got certified to perform weights and measures. We do it in-house. We've saved money in our budget compared to contracting it out with the state. We're also, our engineers in the office are looking at the transfer station site assignment, and they're coming up with some recommendations for maybe a revision to that document and potentially citing a more enhanced transfer station in the future. We're underway with that study right now. Planning and Building Departments, planning, since we've had a great town planner, really a competent town planner, we've actually moved planning into the Building Department wing, and they really complement each other great. They're always talking, the Town Planner and Building Commissioner, getting in different perspectives, it works great. Planning, as you know, there's been a lot of zoning projects completed or underway. Campanelli Business Park zoning projects completed. Zoning map changes and cleanup is approved at Town Meeting. There's been zoning map changes and cleanup that was approved at Town Meeting, the past one with the GB zones. This Town Meeting, there's three map and bylaw amendments for the annual Town Meeting. We have the use table change. We have a 471 Washington Street rezoned from an I district to a GB to match the surrounding zoning changes, and we're establishing an I-2 district in the Campanelli Industrial Park. We also are continuing to work on Planning Board Public Hearing Process to improve the efficiency. Since Bill's come on, he's really looked into it. He's actually cleaned up the agendas tremendously. He gets projects moving along, they're not getting held up in the mix. It's been great for the development community to have Bill on board spearheading that process. From a building standpoint, we've hired that code enforcement manager this year. We've hired an Assistant Building Inspector that was funded at Town Meeting last year, which was great. It really allows Jack Erickson, our Building Commissioner, to stay in-house, review permits, pump them out, and keep the building permits moving, as opposed to having to be in the field doing the inspections. Parking enforcement's been added to the FY25 budget. That was the priority of this board, to endorse parking enforcement. That's rolled into the, under the code enforcement officer duties. He will be working more hours per week to accomplish those goals in the upcoming year, pending Town Meeting approval. And we also mentioned there was a realignment of the staff, licensing, things of that nature, to provide just a more efficient process in town. So there's five departments here. This is why it takes so long. You know, it's just, I don't, I hope I'm not boring anybody on this stuff. All right, so the FY24 goals, some of this is just an overlap of what we just talked about. But again, we just want to continue providing the services we do each and every day. day. We do have duties we do every day. We're always assisting the public that comes to the front desk. We have certain contractors that typically come to the front desk, take up a lot of our time every day. There's, there's one or two that usually do it. So we gotta keep on providing efficient operations there. It's a joke. It's a bad joke, I know. It's horrible. It's horrible.
It's an engineer's joke.
Yeah, it is.
Only they get it.
It's just so bad, isn't it? Yeah. All right. So we're going to advance that the, see now my mindset's off here. We're going to advance the online permitting contract with, with full circle. We'll keep that moving forward. We'll be beginning an update on our subdivision regs. I believe if you look at the subdivision rights, they look like they, they were on a, prepared on a typewriter. We don't have a lot of subdivisions, so it's not, hasn't been a huge priority to update those regs, but they do need to be updated and now with a great town planner, we can get that, that moving forward. We're going to complete the Route 27 zoning project with Old Colony Planning Council. We'll continue to, to advance and program mass DOT projects and non-mass DOT projects under the tip, as we mentioned earlier in the presentation. We will continuously update Development Services website with current information the best we can. That's, that's a goal. Sometimes it's a goal that slips to the end of the priority list, but we try our best to get the most current information out there in a timely fashion. Well, we've updated department fees. That'll be in front of your board very soon. And we did mention the Park Street Sewer Project that will be completed, approved, and then we'll be in the process of generating betterment fees for that project right after that and that'll come in front of your board. That'll close out the project. And we've integrated licensing procedures into Development Services and we're, we're actually improving those procedures as we speak with a schedule that's predictable, proficient and reasonable. Everybody is, will be aware about, will be aware of. It'll be posted on the website. There's a lot of other things that we all work on. There's a lot of people in the departments that don't get credit from this report, but we figured we'd pick at the most important things, present it to you and go from there. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Gito.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You just heard a number of the, the projects in the town and going back to what Ms. Walsh said, a lot of those were funded with, with grants and it has not been too long ago when we did not have the amount of grants coming in that we do now. And I think it's very important to understand that, that that is due to the gentleman that's sitting in that chair and his staff. That has helped make a lot of difference in the infrastructure of the town. That has to continue because the town is growing and we need to do the things that need to be done to deal with our roadway system, our water and sewer system while, before everything gets developed around them and the costs go up even higher. So we need to continue to move ahead in this area and we have somebody who's doing a great job in that. And I thank you.
Thank you very much for the kind words.
Mr. Carrara.
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry, before we.
Certainly you can. Mr. Gito.
The other thing about the Development Services organization is that all of those functions are together. I can remember not long ago when a person would go from department to department to department and there was very little coordination and as a matter of fact, some competition between departments as to what direction the town was going. And that is a huge, huge change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito.
As Mark says, I'm, I'm in the town hall quite a bit, but I will tell you, it's probably out of all the towns that I work in, the most efficient now, what he has built. He has one secretary who's, and I'll use her name, Kristen. She can do math better than some of the engineers that I meet in the field. She'll pull something out, she'll pull it up on the screen. Larry GIS will come over and he'll point something else out and enlarge it when we'd have to tear the road apart to find this stuff. And it's, it's nice to go in and walk away with complete information and it's, and it's readily available now. It's not, hey, come back in a couple of days, I can probably find it. It's there. It, it amazes me. I mean, it's, it's in the computer. I don't like to fool with the computer, but they do it and that's their job. But you go to other towns and you gotta go third floor to the basement, sometimes to another building which is in another part of town, to get all the information that I can get out of there in 10 minutes. So I, you don't underst, it's hard to explain how easy it makes your life nowadays to go into this operation that Mark has put together. He's got a, a, a great septic guy running, Larry Perry. He's, he's diligent. He's always working, moving. Sean's moving and I gotta say, he, he talked about Bill and Bill Roth over there at, at building. I've had Mike Vanna come out to a job and he was excellent and, and he was polite, diligent, did his job and, and it's, it's just nice. But I'm impressed with the, the kid who does the, Matt who does the enforcement. He's, he's a little bit, he's got a little of that pit bull in him, which is nice. You can see the little smile come out. It's like, oh, we got another one. But that's what we needed. We needed somebody who follows up on his stuff, talks to you about it, talks to Mark about it. It's not, oh, well, I'm going to just put something together, give it to the selectmen and we don't know what happened. But to touch on something, I'd like the board, I'm going to work with Matt and Mark on putting some more teeth in it for the, the enforcement person because the way it's set up is letters, 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 threats, then we, we, then we can start finding. Then, and, and we need something where they shouldn't be delivering letters, letters, letters and then finding. We should get something out, something out and then bring them in here. If they don't want to do it, then we should find them and attach it to the property and walk away. Let the 14% build up. So when they go to do something, they gotta come to us first. It's just, it can't be tying up a gentleman's job when he can be moving in another direction and that's what I want to work out with, with Mark and Matt and put it together so that it can come before here and then we'll have even more teeth in, in that area. But thank you.
I, I second that, Scott. Yeah, there's a lot of being a squeaky wheel to get the, the job complete because there's, there's no teeth to it.
Yep.
Unless you want to go to court with some of these people.
And we, we can, the rule of thumb is we can strengthen state law, we can't weaken it. So whatever we do at this table here, as Paul said, is, will hold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. Thank you, Mark. Did you say something, Mr. McCrisky?
Just a couple of quick statements to make. It, it was funny when Scott just mentioned zoning enforcement. I don't know if you caught, Mark turned to me with a big smile on his face because I don't think there's anybody that drives Matt more nuts than I do. The squeaky wheel, well, I'm too rusty gears when I talk about that, as you all know, and it goes back to traction enforcement. Our zoning enforcement is way, way overdue. This was first talked about in 2012. I advocated for a position then. It got put into the budget. Subsequent years, it never got filled and we're doing things now. Our zoning enforcement has been lackadaisical at best and to the edge of nonexistent. We have so many people that are using shipping containers in place of buildings, which drive down property values. They're supposed to have a special permit as an accessory use. There are some buildings that, you know, will have their truck deliveries backing in off of roads. So we're handling all that, which is nice. And on the enforcement, I've been vocal. We have long overdue as well, if you want to call it a city solicitor, a town solicitor, but we have Brian Winner as legal counsel now and he's here a day a week. And I agree, Scott. You know, I, I don't know if I'd go as far as bringing people here. I'd let the staff do their job, but I think they should have 100% support of the board that, yeah, you go out, you do enforcement, you do a reminder and it's that simple. If you don't take the, you know, heed of their word or make a time that, you know, the, where that defect would be corrected, you know, then we take enforcement action. We take them to court. We have way too many businesses and Scott, you know like I do, we have tractor trailers parked in residential neighborhoods. We have construction companies being run out of residential neighborhoods. We have dumps, dumping grounds in some backyards that people bring their property, you know, from job sites back there. They've repackaged it and put it in their trash bags and they've caught that. I mean, so that's what brings the integrity of a community back. And when they say that, you know, it's our time to shine, it's Stoughton's time to shine. We've got the crew here now, right across the board, every department of this town. And when it goes down to, and we'll, we'll say it again, we're building a fire station that had been talked about for 30 years. And Mark, his staff, the chiefs out there, the assistant chiefs out there, Fran's there, the, the developers are here. We're getting it done, you know, and it is, I believe, this is another example of that. This is our time to shine. It comes with a lot of hard work, but we have a board that even though we have some disagreements on the important issues, we've stood together and we're continuing to do that. And, and just having good leadership here and good staff, I mean, we're seeing the fruits of that labor. So, you know, through the town manager as well, but Mark, you know, your staff and you do get a lot of people to pop in. I try not to as much, but, you know, and you handle it. There's no complaints. We, we had a woman who I know that can be very difficult to deal with, made some calls downstairs to an office and, and all she said was, I was pretty mad, but she treated me with respect. She got me answers. She got me a telephone number to call. That's what we're all supposed to be doing when we say, and we all say it, when we all run, we say we're going to serve the residents. And I think that in my long tenure here, that I think that we're servicing the residents better than we have in a lot of years. So, and that's a credit, Mark, as well to you and every other department we have in this town.
Well, thank you very much. I think that.
Thank you.
Does it for this agenda item. Now moving right along to item number three, to establish special account for hometown heroes banner. And we're going to do that in combination with item 9B to accept a donation of $2,000 from American Legion. And with that, we have presenter Sharon Johnson and.
Good evening, everyone. Sharon Johnson, Veteran Services, here with Brian Turner, your veteran service officer. A couple of weeks ago, we gave the board and the community an update on the program and we're happy to say we're moving forward. We have been receiving applications and with that, we've also received funds to launch this program and that's why we're here to ask for a vote to approve the opening of a donation account that will be specifically for this program and also to accept the funds that we've already received. I, I would like to say the American Legion, the VFW and the Friends of Stoughton Center, we're extremely grateful and thankful because we wouldn't be able to get this program off the ground right now if we didn't have that. So to them, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to create an account for, for veterans donations for the, what is it, the home?
Hometown Hero Banner Program.
Yes. Hometown Heroes Banner Program.
And to donate the funds.
And to thank and accept, thank the donors and accept the donations from the VFW Post 89 and the other donations that, that were mentioned. Is that correct?
And all future donations, if we can.
And all future donations.
We have received some donations from private families.
That's the motion on the.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations and thank you so much.
Thank you all. We're excited.
We're moving right along to item number four and that is to expand a no parking regulation at Campanelli Parkway and Sherman Avenue. Is Sergeant O'Connor here? Oh, here he is. Hello and welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having me again. So, Select Board Member McCrisky reached out to me. This area's kind of been a problem child with illegal dumping, trucks, box trucks parked all over the place, sometimes legally, sometimes illegally, but it kind of wreaks havoc down there, especially at certain times when certain particular businesses' trucks are coming in and out of there. They just park all over the place. He was interested in basically creating Campanelli and Sherman Ave as no parking zones. I looked, I, I don't have any issue with it. It doesn't create a safety issue if we do do that. I really can't see any real negatives about doing it. So I have no problem if the board decides to impose parking restrictions on those streets.
Thank you, Sergeant. Are there any question? Oh, Mr. McCrisky.
Madam Chair, just as a backfiller, this is one of the places I talked about where we have out-of-state trucking companies that come in and clog roads, park illegally. We have owner operators parking their vehicles illegally in Stoughton because they don't pay their excise tax to the town of Stoughton. They live out of town and these vehicles were being parked overnight on the streets. So there is a Department of Revenue law that says if you principally garage a vehicle in a municipality for more than six months, then you're required to pay the excise tax to that town. So we're dealing with out-of-town businesses that don't, people don't live here. They do business, but they're using, you know, our streets as a trucking terminal. It's just not right. It's not right that they're doing that in areas that it shouldn't be. As we know, we've just made a huge financial investment in Campanelli Parkway, Schuman Drive. If we all know, there's a major national company that does defense work on Schuman Drive. You know, we have a good base for business and before this gets out of control, that's why I've asked that the board to consider to establishing the no parking zone, reach out to Sergeant O'Connor and said, is there any safety issue that would prevent that? And he gave you his answer tonight. So thank you very much and Sergeant, thank you for the courtesy you extended to me many times. Hopefully no more calls now.
No problem. Anytime. Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Cavey.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. McCrisky, thank you very much for, for your statement. That was going to be my question. I, since I don't travel this area very often, I wasn't sure if there were a lot of people parking there and what the, what the reason was, but what you've explained makes perfect sense. Sergeant O'Connor, I have, I have most respect for your views on these things. I am grateful for the work you do and, and happy to, to vote positively for your recommendation. I am grateful for the work you do and happy to vote positively for your recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? A motion, please?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Moving right along to item, our next item, number five, update on the fire station project, Palmeroy Associates LLC.
My name is Richard Palmeroy from Palmeroy Associates and Glenn Galret, excuse me, from Doran Whittier Architects, and we're here to give you an update on the fire station project. It's been a while since we've been in front of you, and I'm reminded it was just before receiving bids last year around this time. So it's been, it's been a while. But we had favorable bids, and we are happy to have CTA Construction onboard as our general contractor, and work begin in late spring of 2023. We had groundbreaking after the work had begun in the end of August in 2023. It was really well attended. It was nice to see everyone there, and we're able to present some progress with the site as well as Bill Nick Foundation, and actually some structural steel was going up at that time. So it was exciting, and we had a great turnout for that. Glenn and I are going to sort of feed off of each other on this to give you, so you can get a full rounded view of where we're at with this project. But the site work, the major components of the site work have been completed at this time, and they've worked straight through the winter. And we're looking forward to seeing some binder of pavement going down this spring. And the site work will follow right up and be complete in time to open up the facility in August. The building itself, the foundations have been poured, structural steel is up. The building is tight to the weather. What that means is that the exterior envelope is tight, which allows us to begin our rough ins of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing items, as well as beginning our finishes. So the project is moving along at a very good pace, and we're looking at finishes starting with drywall. We're actually starting now, so they're working into that finish stage. And Glenn's team, from the architectural perspective, has been extremely busy with the project in general, but also reviewing shop drawings and material submittals all along the way. Just to give you a bit of clarification on that, every component of the building, whether it be a roof section or roofing material, or a wall section, or concrete, or even a screw utilized for fastening, has to be submitted, and it has to be confirmed that it meets the specifications that the contractor bid on. So it's a huge endeavor to accomplish that. And it takes a lot of time because it's very important that the entire system is as was designed. So that's something that is, as I said, very important for the project as well as the quality control. We have a site representative, project manager, site project manager on site that is keeping eyes and ears on the project. It works for our company. We're conducting meetings on a weekly basis. We have twice monthly working group meetings and then, you know, regular meetings in between. So there's a meeting every single week, and it's attended by the town, members of the town and our working group. At this point, you know, we're in the middle of the project. We have a very healthy budget. Things are, we've had some change orders that have, that we've, you know, encumbered along the way, but we're on budget and we're doing quite well. We're very happy with that. It's a process from the beginning to the end, and the team works on it every single day. The, I mentioned, we do have some, we have had some change orders in a project. That's normal for a project. We have, you know, whether they be unforeseen conditions or design-related or owner upgrades, but we work through those on a regular basis, on a daily basis through the project, and it's nothing out of the ordinary. A big component for this project is owner equipment, the equipment that's going to be going into the facility that's not owned by the general contractor. So we're in the process of procuring those components right now so that they can be interjected into the project as we move into the finish stage. All of that equipment's been coordinated with the design professionals to make sure that we have the correct voltages and hookups required so that they operate with the facility. We are on schedule. We, we're looking to open the facility in August of this year, which is what was projected even at town meeting. So we're, it's been a struggle. We've had our weather delays, and we had, we've had some, you know, issues back and forth, but we're on schedule. And we're on budget. We have, we're sticking to our numbers, and we're very happy with that. So it's a very good project. I don't know if anybody's really seen it, but it's really starting to take shape now, and you can see how nicely it fits into the property. And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit. I'm sorry I took the stage again, but
You stole the thunder. But no, I can fill in a few details because Glenn Galret, Doran Whittier Architects, but I think Rick mentioned that. And one thing I wanted to note, you didn't touch on, Rick's partner, Taylor McDonald, who you guys have seen in previous meetings, is out on a little bit of a leave of absence, and Rick has stepped in seamlessly. These guys have been great to work with and communicate well, and it's been a pleasure working with them. But to Rick's point, it's been fast and exciting since last spring. I did want to note that there's been an extraordinary amount of oversight. Their field representative, our office, an independent testing agency that's essentially a fourth party, checks everything from the soil compaction to the quality of the concrete, the placement of the reinforcing steel in the concrete, the welded steel frames, all the way down to things like the mortar that hold the bricks together and the air and vapor barrier membrane if it's stuck to the wall accurately. So this stuff is catalogued carefully, as well as our regular inspections and our engineer team inspections. And those reports and those testing results, that's, that's an active file that everyone on the project, including the building commissioner and other folks on the owners' team, have had access to. And except for a few trucks in the hot summer of concrete that got turned away, that, that stuff is all passed with flying colors. And I mention that just to restate that every nut and bolt is vetted. And our job and Palmeroy's office job is to hold the contractors' feet to the fire, to make sure we get what we bought, and so far, so good. Yeah, no.
We did have a PowerPoint that, I don't know if it got up on the screen, so if we could take a moment so the public can see that, too, that'd be great.
Good point.
Thank you.
And then in the big picture, I wanted to note that, to Rick's point, the site work is vastly complete. The rough grading is all done. We did hit some unforeseen ledge that required a few weeks of blasting and removal and processing. But we're at the point now where the utilities are all run in and onto the site. The water department brought a new main in. We've got gas. We've got the underground infrastructure ready for National Grid to pull the power lines in. The transformer is in the yard, ready to go. That's been a supply chain issue on other projects that we seem to have dodged on this one. So that is all looking good. That's, that's the nuts and bolts on Prospect Street. I don't know if you have more about that, or you want to talk about Freeman?
We'll talk a little bit about our schedule when we get to that slide, but I think we can move into Freeman Street if that's okay with
Yes, please.
I'm going to let Glenn, because primarily Freeman Street's been in design, so I'll let Glenn provide you an update on that, and I'll jump in.
Sure. We completed the design development package at the end of last year. So this has now brought the design to a point that has enough information that cost estimating can be done, and you can really start to see what the scope of the project is. We've got a little bit of breathing room here before we start construction documents for bidding, which was good timing because we're doing a little tuning on the plans with different town departments. I mean, obviously, the fire department, but the Board of Health slash VNA. We're getting the plans adjusted so we can start the construction documents based on this adjusted program. And that's, that looks like it's going to work out great. We are just about ready. I know, I don't know if Mark, Mark's here. We're about ready to submit to the planning board for site plan review. We've got updated civil drawings and survey information that was tough to come by. As an aside, we have had some difficulty getting geotechnical consultants to get proposals in to do work for things like the Borings, where they study the dirt. I mean, these are like our dirt wizards. It's how we design the foundations and the drainage systems. We had a little bit of a lag getting vendors to respond, but are moving just fine now. But for Freeman Street, you know, I guess in the big picture, it's interesting, right? The fire station project is a few different moving parts. The Prospect Street building, a new operations building, and Freeman Street, the new house for the fire department admin. And so it's kind of neat to keep the building in the fire department, but to take that day-to-day operations out and to restore a little bit of the historic fabric of the building, as well as provide some more parking. So the schedule on that is to have it ready to bid midsummer so that when Prospect Street is complete, we have a contractor lined up to start construction as soon as the fire department moves out of Freeman Street. Which, again, and I'm sure Rick could go into detail, to be able to vacate the building saves a lot of money. We don't have to phase and be quite so fussy. We can turn it over to the general contractor, and they can have at it. So that, that should help go fairly quickly. But that will be scheduled to be complete in about a year from when they start construction. So early next fall, maybe the end of the summer, depending on how bidding goes and how fast we get the contract up and going. I think that's, that's
Thank you. The next slide actually is a schedule, and we can walk through this. There's a lot of information here, but basically where the yellow line is is February of this year, and we're, we're right on track. The goal is to get Freeman Street out on the street in June, July, and have that bid so that when the department moves out, when the, when the new station is ready for the department move in, we can jump right into Freeman Street construction. And that, our goal is to get, move into, into Prospect Street in August of this year. It may slip a little bit, you know, as we're getting into fit up and setting up all our systems and equipment, but that's our target, and we've been sticking, we're, we're right on that number right now, right on that date. And then, as Glenn had mentioned, we'll jump into, into Freeman Street, and that looks to be about a 12-month construction schedule, so it'll be about a year. We'll be complete with that in September of 2025. So everything's tracking quite well, and this is exactly the way it was presented at town meeting. And with that, we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Before we start with the questions, you've given us a very thorough outlook on where we are, where we're going, the schedule and the whole bit. And not to flank you, but we did have, receive a letter from one of the residents, and our town manager, Mr. Coulter, did ask if he should read it. And I think, yes, I think everyone should know, you know, what a resident is saying in this regard.
Through you, Madam Chair. This issue is not a new issue. No surprises here. But the resident did ask that we read it aloud, and the policy of this board is that we do just that. Dear Mr. Coulter, members of the Select Board, it's from, and I hope I pronounce her name correctly, Leah Abicasus?
Abicasus.
Abicasus. Thank you, Mr. Cavey. I am reaching out again to remind you of my concerns regarding the plans for installing a six-foot chain link fence and bushes behind my property in the new fire station property at 400 Prospect Street, as well as constant early morning noise pollution that is still occurring at the site. As we step into 2024, the construction noise and disturbances have persisted, and we continue to experience challenges such as hearing conversations of construction workers, constant truck backing up, noises, and the visibility of individuals moving around the site. This raises serious concerns about the impact of a 24/7 fire station on the quality of our life, especially considering the proposed fence may not adequately address these issues. I've contacted the police, Palmeroy Associates, and Mr. Bill Rothen in the past regarding the noise disturbances caused by loud trucks and revving engines before 7:00 a.m. Unfortunately, these efforts have not led to any significant improvements, and the noise continues to disrupt our daily lives, particularly in the past last two weeks. Additionally, there is now a constant light source emanating from the building that shines into my yard 24 hours a day. The light pollution further compounds the challenges we face and impacts our ability to enjoy our property in peace. I reiterate my request for the installation of a berm with a solid fence on top as a more promising solution to address both privacy and noise concerns. I also request that, however possible, the noise early in the morning be addressed. It is illegal in Massachusetts for this to occur before 7:00 a.m., and I will address this with the police or whomever I need to for it to be taken care of. I kindly request that the Select Board intervene and take the necessary steps to address these issues promptly. Your assistance in resolving these matters would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Leah. So we raised that and entered it into the record, and Madam Chair, through you, I'd ask that the panel be given an opportunity to respond to it.
Thank you very much. Yes. So what I heard was two or three issues. One was prior, noise prior to 7:00 a.m., the fence, and what was the
Light.
The lights. That's it.
So Madam Chair, I would break them down into current construction issues of early morning, which the noise and sights and sounds that go with a construction site, and then the future issues that have to do with a permanent berm or barrier and a lighting system of the station. So with that, gentlemen?
Sure. I'll start, and we can, I wasn't aware of this. I'm sure that my staff was or is, but we will address the noise concerns before 7:00 a.m., the standard protocol. As far as the light pollution goes, we can look into that and see what exactly the issue is. We do have to light the interior of the space. It's a construction site, and by code, that has to be lit 24/7 for safety purposes. But we can look at ways to maybe shade those windows that could be directing towards that neighbor. And as far as the berm and the fence, we have a plan to install that as part of our finishes on site. But I think what would be, could be appropriate for the board, if you'd like, is that we can provide a response to that letter in writing, so you have it for record. And we can also reach out to the neighbor. And what I'd like to do is try to, you know, work with them and address their concerns rather than them having to bring it to you. So, you know, I apologize for the inconvenience, but we'll deal with it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the Select Board to our guest, Vice Chair Cavey?
Not a question. I was just looking to make a couple of comments. And I hope that I, along the last couple of years, I've expressed this to you personally outside of a meeting. But I do want to say that I am grateful for the work that you've done for the town. I'm really glad that we had you onboard from such a early point. You've helped guide us through a lot of, a lot of the twists and turns of this, and you've done it with tremendous character. And for that, I'm personally very grateful. And I think that the success of this project is very closely tied to the quality of the work that you're doing, and I thank you so much for it. The only question I have is, you mentioned that it's on schedule, the project's on schedule, and it looks like, you know, obviously, there might be a little bit of slippage, but it's pretty close, close enough by my standards. The question I've been asked a couple of times is about budget. The question I've been asked a couple of times is about budget and, and about whether or not it's over budget. And my understanding, I was speaking with our finance director and our, actually our former interim county accountant, is that we are on budget and you've reiterated that. But is there, is, can you help me sort of understand, perhaps, and if you don't have this handy, we can always do it through email later at another point. But it, is it fair to sort of associate the percentage of the project done with the percentage of, of the costs? Or is, that seems probably maybe a little bit weak of a correlation. But how do we, how do we judge budget compared to the schedule?
Well, percent complete on the general contractor's payment application is usually off a bit. We, we're very aggressive with how we approve invoices. So the, I'm not exactly sure where their payment application shows percent complete, but it's probably around 60%. But baked into that is 5% retainage that's held on every dollar that is funded. So, you know, that, that shows up as money that still hasn't been paid to the contractor. And we try to make sure that in every payment application, we're ahead of the contractors. In other words, they're never ahead of us. So their payment application always reflects a percentage complete that is really less than where we're at on the job. The other component of that is that the tail end of the project is where a lot of the money starts flowing in quickly. We have a lot of subs on site. We have a lot of expensive equipment that is showing up and being installed. Early in the process, you only have the site contractor onboard, foundations and structural steel. So the, the end of the project is when the payment applications get larger on a monthly basis and our percent complete jumps up quickly every single month. Does that answer your question?
It does. It helps me understand it. Also, you know, the day-to-day responsibility of making sure we're on, on task is, it belongs to you guys. And so for me, no news is good news in a sense. But what is the, what mechanism do you have if, if you run into an issue where, where you foresee some issues with the budget? Do you simply raise that with, with the town manager?
That's correct.
Okay. So then, so we'll continue with no news is good news and we know the, it's on, that you, you have your eye on the, on the ball in the meantime. And if there's an issue, we'll hear through the town manager.
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the, for the work you're doing. It really is tremendous to see these, these projects that take years from beginning and, and the concentration and focus that you're able to maintain for, for these extended periods of time. And as again, I'm just really appreciative for the work you do and also for the character that you, that you, that you and your, your organizations project. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd, I'd love to take the compliment, but I, I know you know that it starts at the top and we're down at the bottom, really. So you have such a great, or a great, great town and great people that work within the town and the interactions that we've had from, from day one have been extremely positive. Everybody works together. So we're able to do what we do best because of the support that we're getting from, from the town manager and all of the departments.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Oh, Mr. Gito.
I've driven, driven onto your site several times. I haven't been talking with anybody. It's quite a project. I guess I have two questions. The first is, you say you're about 60% of the way through the project now in terms of costs and do you have a sense, I think that's what you said. And do you have any sense of how that, that last part sort of plays out generally and, and where are you on any curve that you might have for, for building projects like this? I think what I heard you say is that the thing goes along like this and then it slopes up near the end because of, of a lot of things coming on site that are very expensive and being put in. So are we on the proper part of that curve now so that when we get to the end, we're going to be okay?
I would say yes, and I, I think what I indicated earlier was that the payment applications represent about 60% complete, but I feel that they're farther along than that. We've only paid them up to 60%, but I think, I think we're farther along than that. And it, no doubt, it's a race to the finish line because every day, there's more contractors in the building, working on the building and it becomes a real, a real push to get to the finish line. We'll be doing quality control reviews, punch lists, all of those components that'll happen fast and furious. We feel very comfortable with where we are with our schedule, but we can't let our, can't let our guard down at all. And we're looking at every submittal that's being reviewed at this point to see if there's any impact on schedule and we're looking at any of the discussions. We have the contractor to monitor that. So it's a, it's a, you know, hour by hour monitoring of that, but we feel comfortable with where we are with the schedule.
Thank you for that. The second question is, you said that there were some change orders in the project. Could you describe the, a couple of the larger ones and how they came up and what they've, what they've done to the project?
Well, I have to say the largest would be the unforeseen ledge on-site and that was dealt with through the contract and through unit prices. And the, after it was discovered, it was documented and then after the material was reviewed, the area was redocumented and that was the basis for an understanding of the cost adjustment for that.
So what was the cost of that, the cost difference?
I don't have the, the exact number off the top of my head, but.
But perhaps you could pull that together. There, some people have issues with the project. It's nice to be able to, to give facts and so if you could do that, that'd be fine. The second item, the second change order that, that was larger, or were there any others that were anywhere near that? If there weren't, then.
No, I can't think of any other large change orders, but Glenn, you might be able to.
Yeah, in a nutshell, all the change orders besides the ledge were either credits or small tweaks to the.
Then let's stop talking about it.
But to be fair, I think between the design and, and everything besides the ledge that was unforeseen have been nominal. And I think if, at least at this point, if, if Rick in his office ran a, an analysis of assigning responsibility, I think the, the project is running very low and the bulk of the, the extra cost has been truly unforeseen. We, with the department, the engineering department, we went above and beyond in how much site analysis we did. We did about four times as many test pits, literally digging holes around the entire site to see what we could see. And we just, it was, I like to think of it like a game of Battleship, right? Where you're just going around your opponent's aircraft carrier and as soon as they started clearing the trees and big brush away from the site, they hit this, this outcrop. So, but I think Palmero's office has done a good job with having a very conservative, healthy contingency that's baked into the budget. So we have not gone beyond any of the numbers that we've started with. So would I rather have had that contingency in our back pocket for Freeman Street? Yes, but we're still okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrara?
Through you, Madam Chairman. What are you guys going to use for a berm for that, that homeowner?
Oh, the berm? There's a natural change in elevation on that edge of the site, but it's less of a berm and more of a, a series of fairly dense evergreen plantings that go in on that, that side. That was a long discussion during the planning board reviews. And the, the black vinyl coated chain link fence seemed like the least obtrusive visually. It, it is obviously transparent visually at a distance, but doesn't create a sense of, of, you know, barricade. I think the fire department, if you ask them, would feel that there's no need for any fence, but the planning board felt strongly that we have it. I do know that the house that's at the corner of the site is quite close. It's, it's, it's the only one. And I, I do know, we have had two or three times where the contractor, the general contractor has reported that they've told their subcontractors to stop starting the trucks too early. That has been a management issue on them. They know they have to do a better job. The lighting Rick touched on, but that, that visual screen, what we've got as part of the order of conditions with the planning board is this spring, once the, the leaves start coming out, they have requested that we walk the site with our landscape architect and look at either adding features or maybe redistributing some of the plantings that are, say, down the driveway, further up onto the site if, if we need a more of a visual screen. But there's, except for a gentle grading of the edge of the site, there's not a, a built-up berm that's proposed that, I think we've, we've done enough site moving that I'd rather address it in a, in a less invasive, expensive way.
Yeah, as long as we can make the, the homeowner, because I know that building wasn't supposed to be that far back. As far as the, the trucks, the, by law, you're allowed on the site at 6:00 if you have to fuel and stuff like that and grease, but you're not supposed to be cranking and clinking. And I, I live very close and I'm not, I'm not deaf. And the trucks that were going in there had loud exhausts because they were good-looking trucks with fancy exhaust and you could hear them come down the hill with the jake brake all the way. So they crawled in the site and then the site wasn't allowable for the trailer to get in there and unload. So they're cranking machines 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning off the trailers. And then I get the calls. I'm up. And I mean, it doesn't bother me, but I know it bothers the people who are butted the site. And I, I wasn't going to go in and say anything. I passed it on and it went nowhere because the trucks were still coming out of there loaded before 7:00. And I know that they have to move quick and get that stuff out so they can make the amount of loads to get all that ledge out of there that they were moving to do it. But, you know, it, most of the heavy stuff's done, so I don't know what'll be going on in there right now. Mostly it'll be just jobbing guys coming in and then they just open their trucks, pull out their stuff and go on the inside. So maybe that's over with for now, for a while.
Well, we still have, we still will address it and, but we still have grading to do and parking lot preparation and pavement.
That'll come summertime and, and maybe the, like you say, the leaves will disperse some of the, but I, I, I've paid attention and, and, you know, when you're, when you're, you're running, you're running to make money and I, and I understand the guys and the trucks. But it wasn't like they even gave a, a hoot. It was early, early and the jakes, well, back and forth.
Mr. Coulter?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick questions, guys, and perhaps the chief and, and assistant chief can help here. We just finished our transition to 911, so now fire and police are on 911. And Mike and Jack, maybe you could speak to this as well. What enhancements are in this building as a result of the investments, the capital investments that regional 911 will be making to our EMS and police and fire service?
Do you want to go with that? It's ongoing. The, the Holbrook Regional folks have been very helpful. Had we been six months or 12 months ahead, we would have got a lot more benefit in the Prospect Street building. But as it is, the, the grant that the town is receiving will cover some of the communications, infrastructure, the antenna and that kind of thing at Prospect Street. Freeman Street's a different order of magnitude. I don't know the exact grant application amount, but it's easily, in, in the construction cost estimate, I could very conservatively pull out about $800,000 in scope that what our, our bid documents will show. Instead of our electrical engineer saying, here's where the MDF room goes, here's the generator, here's the transfer switch, they'll say buy others, right? And this is where the state comes in with the grant and their vendors off the state list and provide that, that equipment. That, you guys have, have hit a chord or I, I might go so far to say the holy grail of uncovering money to help pay for a capital project. This is every project from the interview, feasibility study, schematic design. The question we get is, is there grant money? This, this has been the only meaningful source that I've, I've ever seen and it's, it's significant.
That's great news. Thank you. Mike, through you, Madam Chair. Mike, could you add to that?
Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief Carroll. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we'll stay on the grant for a second. The grant is, we've been working and the assistant chief certainly has been working very hard with Holbrook, with Director Hook and his deputy director Lauren to put together that grant. Where it helps with Prospect Street, unfortunately, like Glenn said, is we're a little, little late going to regional and not making that commitment earlier cost us. That being said, we have tried to put as much as we could towards that. That's fiber optics, communications, basically all the notifications of, of all calls that come in is all being done and outfitted, basically audiovisual type materials through the, the 911 grant. The other benefit to it is Freeman Street is going to be, it's a nice cushion, to say the least. And that grant, was that submitted yet?
No, chief.
Yeah. So the grant will be submitted at the end of March. We'll probably get some sort of oral commitment in late June, but really July will be the award date. And I think I can speak to, and not only us, but the police department as well has been work, have been working and it's going to really help this town and running fiber optics all, all throughout on the 911 system. And in working through some storms and talking to Trish, it might be a better idea and 911 grant will take care of it, but having police and fire on its own separate fiber optics, right? We've had a couple times this past year where fiber optics have dropped. They come in through the schools, which are pushed over to the police department. I've been out there with Director Hook, the police chief, trying to find where the problem is. We should really have a 911 fiber optics that is basically a redundant with microwave antennas, but really building a strong public safety communication system within this town, probably, probably with that type of thing, the best around, to be honest with you. I would like to address a couple of other things. One is Ms. Abicasus contacted me on Monday. I addressed it immediately on Monday. I reached out to her. I not only did that, but I called the Palmeroys' site supervisor who was contacting CTA supervisor. It seems like the vehicles, maybe they were starting them up to let them run a little bit. There's also, you know, you talk about loud noises. We run in every, every week now, the assistant chief and myself are committed to go into every week. Typically, we go every two weeks to the work meetings. We're going to start going every week. We started last week going every single week just to make sure there's no delay in any communications whatsoever. If there's something that needs to be addressed, one of us will be on it or, and we will get it resolved or get Glenn an answer. He's probably tired of our emails, but, you know, we want to be responsive. We don't want to hold this, anything up. You know, this project, it, it's all timing, right? Once this is open, we move. know, this project, it's all timing, right? Once this is open, we move operations out of Freeman Street, and then we get working on Freeman Street. You know, we're very committed to this process. We have our own working group within the department, Captain O'Neil, firefighter John DeAndrea, who's an electrician. We're constantly in communications or touring. We toured the building last Thursday. Drywall's going up. I think some of those noises will be, before that, it was all metal and block. You're going to hear echoes. No windows were in. The bay doors aren't in yet. So, and to the town manager's advice, I said, you know, with the noise, just give us some time, because I think a lot of this will fix itself. But I did reach right out to her on Monday, saw her email, got right back to her. She thanked me for getting back to her. I put her in contact with that site supervisor as well, so that there's a direct communication that can be resolved right away. I've said this since day one I came in here. Any issues, reach out to me. Reach out to me. I am responsible to the residents. I am responsible to the community. If there's any problems with trucks, call me. I'll be on it. For the most part, aside from being in the middle of, like, last night in Eastern to a lamp fire, I'll drop what I'm doing. And even then, if it's in Eastern, maybe I can just pass command and move on, right? But I will address the issues. Leah's been the only one who's really reached out to me, and I asked that, you know, been saying from day one, come to my office, meet with me. We will resolve, or we will try to resolve, or work to compromise, and that's what we're here for. We try to fix problems 24 hours, seven days a week. So these are the minor ones. Like, these are easy, right? So, but I do want you to know that I am on point on this, and if any of you select board members hear something, push it to me, right? I'll work the best I can and find the right people to resolve that problem. Okay?
Madam Chair, I can attest that during the blasting phase of this project, Mike actually went door-to-door to knock on people's doors and let them know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, what they can expect from it, and gave him his card to call them should they have any problems. I think the chief has been incredibly receptive to the neighboring communities for a project that's in the middle of a neighborhood. So it's, he's been outstanding.
And on that point, I even videoed foundations and, yeah, taught them and took notes and made sure that, you know, again, all I can say is, if there's an issue, we will address it. You know, we want to be part of the community. We don't want to be abrasive, so, and that's our goal. And I'll answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much for the update and answering our questions and our concerns. I don't believe that there are any questions. I think...
Okay. Well, thank you. Can I just touch on something?
Yes, you certainly can.
I got an email during this, and it's ironic that you're talking about grants, but my program administrator, Sarah Blacker, just notified me. She's been working with FEMA on a grant, and she just sent me the contracts. We will receive $321,514, $321,514.17 from FEMA. You know, these grants are difficult. As you know, not only the beginning of the process, the tough part is the management aspect of it and what they require. They're just not quarterly updates. They require meetings. And I believe that, you know, we do keep track of this. In the past two years, we've brought in, you know, and I have to say, Pam does a great job, too. Some of us was already taken in, but $1.2 million, over $1.2 million in grants awarded. It's helped. It helps. And we will constantly be seeking these out and trying to find them. Some went to both the communities, some were for fire-related projects themselves. But I think that, you know, having the ability, and again, having the resources, are helpful to get us through some of the tougher times, I guess. But I just wanted to...
Madam Chair, just a very brief question.
Yes.
Mike, very briefly. If you had to just do a wild guess estimate as to what the total grant money will be from 911, what would you expect that to be?
Really putting me out there. Okay. There's still on smack. No, it's recording, right? I would say, so Norwood, who basically went in just before us, the time in which I wanted to get in, they received approximately $8 million, $8 million of, like, communities. You know, we may need a little bit more because they have a public safety building. Some of their stuff may have already been in place, but received 8 million. I also know that the State 911 Commission, for this upcoming grant year, added another $40 million to its pot for this incentive grant to move the piece out there, which is great, right? Like, that means, and hopefully, at the very least, I'd like to, I'm thinking we're tracking around that 8 million, but I would venture to say north of that.
Thanks, Mike.
I can't go any further than that. I don't...
I think we're happy with 8 million.
It'll be 7.9, and he'll hang me. So, but, yeah, so that's all, I believe. It's good stuff, right? Thank you. Well, it's the team. I mean, I'm just the point guy sometimes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Moving right along to our, thank you so much, to our next, this is item number six, and this is the hearing on the water abatement application. Request for a hearing, RND Landscaping Incorporated, 250 Pearl Street.
Madam Chair, it was a gentleman, I guess.
Oh.
Is there any opportunity for public comment and questions on the fire station project? That was kind of a big...
Was it in reference, you, yeah, was it in reference to the resident's letter that we sent? Because we did read that letter and addressed it, her concerns.
I just wanted to know...
Oh, please come forward and state your name and address. And please be mindful that we have a hearing, and they've been waiting patiently. It was scheduled for 8:45.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Greg Polkak, Prospect Street. No, I just, one of the, I live on Prospect, so of course, you know, it's very important, this project and making sure it goes smoothly. And so I did come here just to find the chain of command for when there are complaints. As I'm on the Prospect Street side, I hear what's going on on that side, so it's good to know that we can address it, you know, with the fire chief directly, and the board, and the town manager. So I'd like to be able to forward those concerns directly to all of you, to keep you in the loop. So that was really it. But I think, you know, the letter touched on all of it. It's lighting, it's noise, it's the future plan. Let's do this right to keep the residents that are but this happy, because, you know, we have the opportunity to do it right. We still have time to do it right. If she wants a berm and it's not on the budget, maybe we should look at a berm, you know? Maybe there's some extra dirt there. We can build it up on that side. So anyways, just, it's good to know the chain of command. It's good to know everyone is listening, and that's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter.
Just to reiterate, Madam Chair, the chain of command would be the chief. If whatever reason a resident is not satisfied, it would be to me or to Mark, one of the two of us, starting with me. And if they're not happy with that, then they should rightfully go to the board and make their concerns known. That would be the chain of command.
Thank you very much. And I saw Vice Chair KB. Did you have a comment or concern or not?
You know, I'll just add, this is public knowledge. My phone number's on the website, and I'm more than happy to take these calls. And if it were to go to me, I would simply filter it the same way Mr. Coulter addressed it, but at least you wouldn't, if somebody is online watching this, if they reach out to one of us, then we will do our best to send it the right way. I won't have answers, but I can certainly help you find them, and we'd be happy to do that. So always feel free to look on the website. The select board have their own website. Several of us have our phone numbers on there. There's also emails that I think are available on there. So it's important that these concerns be addressed, and I agree that we ought to do it right while we have the opportunity. This is something that, I mean no disrespect to previous select boards, but this is something where there have been missteps in the past that we pay for later down the road. And we've seen that in a variety of projects. And, you know, to the extent that we're capable of avoiding them, we ought to. So I appreciate Ms. Appicciato's letter and your sentiments as well. I agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair KB, thank you. Okay, moving right along to our hearing, and it's the water abatement application. Request for a hearing at RND Landscaping Incorporated at 250 Pearl Street. If Mr. Fernando Rego is in the audience, and Karen, please step forward, and we'll talk...
As well as Phil, Madam Chair. As well as Phil.
As well as Phil, if there's, you might have to pull another seat.
Phil will pull it up. Madam Chair, as they're approaching the board, this appeal is probably among the most complicated ones I had ever seen, I have ever seen. So I'm going to ask Karen to give a very, if you don't mind, it's for you, Madam Chair, to give a very macro overview. This appeal does not go back 15 years. It goes back two years, if I, two or three years.
A little over a year.
Oh, I'm sorry. But the readings were wrong for 15 years, and the applicant benefited from us being wrong. But they're only looking to recover for the past year. So Karen, through you, Madam Chair.
Before you start, you gave us a little context, which usually that is Vice Chair KB.
I respect that.
But glad that you did that. We do have to open the public hearing, and, but that's okay. We can do it now. We haven't gone too far into it. May I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I vote aye as well. So Karen, please give us more detail on this complex matter. And may I also say that all should address me, because sometimes a resident doesn't understand the process, but instead of addressing Karen or Phil, you would address me. Thank you very much.
Okay, so as Tom said, Mr. Rego's account was set up wrong in our water system for quite some time. When we went to change out his water meter and we got the read back off of the reader, and it was input into our system, that's when I realized something was wrong with his account. So I went back through the account and realized that his reads were coming over incorrectly. All of the numbers were not coming over. So he should have been getting billed much more than he had for quite some time now. So I sent Mr. Rego a letter to let him know, and he disagrees with it. So...
Madam Chair, before...
Thank you for that.
I so apologize.
Go ahead.
Before the board begins its questioning, may I ask, Karen, for how many years was it misreading, approximately?
Since 2005.
So for many, many, many years. The data was entered in the account incorrectly. It wasn't until they did the meter reading a year ago that they realized it was wrong. What's at issue here is a bill that is for the last, what period?
The bill he was sent...
Not since 2005.
No.
For the last year. We're not trying to recover that for our mistake.
The bill that he was sent was covered from September 2nd, 2022, through September 8th, 2023.
Not for that period since 2005?
No.
That's not what's at question here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Rego?
I don't understand. The meter was never reading right for 15 years. I never complained about I wasn't paying enough, like she mentioned to me one time when I went to see her. Because, you know, we've always been having two people living on our house. It's a small house. There's one bad room. It's pretty much it. So years ago, we used to have, we own 250 Pearl Street, and we also own 242 Pearl Street. But at that time, the house got demolished years and years ago because we wanted to make part of the landscaping yard, and we didn't want to rent that property because it would interfere with our business and stuff. So we demolished it. I don't believe it was Mrs. Brun, and I saw it at that time, but, you know, I'm being receiving bills for 242 Pearl Street, you know, which it's not a usage of water, but this, you know, at the beginning, they started sending me a bill, and I went in, I questioned why I'm being paying a bill when I'm not having it needed anymore. And they said, well, we're not really charging for the water just because you're having the shut-off on the street anytime, anything, bill's there, it's there, you've got to pay a fee for it. So this time, when I received this, I received, actually, I've been receiving a notice for about a few months before they changed the meter, but I never really paid attention to that. On the bill on the 242 Pearl Street, they're sending me that note all the time, saying I needed to contact the water ton, but no reading for, there was no, they said on a note that, oh, please contact the water department because they're not having a usage to the bill. But they're also sending me that on the 242 Pearl Street. So I never paid attention to that. But at one point, I believe I received a letter from the ton, from the water department, and then I contacted them, got away. So they went there and they changed the meter. So my question is, if it's been a mistake since 2005, how can it not be a mistake right now? I'm having the same two people living on that house. I cannot be getting paid a bill. I mean, how much water do you need to use for 8,000, I mean, I know this includes the sewer tube, but how much you need to use for water for 8,836.74 for one year for two people living on our house? She complained. She said, when I first brought that problem to her, she mentioned to me, and she says, oh, it has nothing to do with the house. It has to do with the business on the back. I says, no, she made it. She first said I was having two meters. I said, I don't have no two meters. It's only one meter for the whole property.
Who is the she in this case? Who is the she? Okay, I'm trying to make sure, who the character is... Okay, go ahead.
When I brought the problem to her, she first said that, oh, I'm sorry. She first said that it was two meters on the property. I said, it's no, it's two meters. It's only one meter. All I just did, I brought water to my business on the back from the front house. And then she realized it wasn't, no, the second letter, she sent it to me. Then I went to see her again, and then she says, I realized it wasn't no two meters, but it's been a problem with the reading of the metering stuff. My question is this. If you were to be a problem before, I cannot be a problem right now with this new meter they put it. Because you look at it, you're thinking about it. I believe everybody, I don't live in Stoughton, but if everybody lives here with the two, three people living on the house, I can't come up with a bill for 8,836 for one year. This is approximately what I'm paying for property taxes on that property. That's outrageous. All I just asked her was to get everything checked, make sure it wasn't a mistake. So I didn't get that attention from her. If I'm paying my property and paying everything, why can't they do something to see if there is a problem there at this moment right now? Nobody cared about it. They just told me, it's like, oh, that is what it is, and that's what it's getting paid for. So that means if they were to charge me for $20,000 bill for one year, is that what it is? I mean, I don't get it. I don't understand. That's outrageous, this bill.
You're not contesting the amount of water that went in, correct?
Sure. It's only two people living on that house.
How many people? That doesn't matter, right? You can leave a faucet on all day, and it doesn't matter if only two people are there or 1,000 people.
I believe you would have to take a shower all day long.
But the question is, the amount of water that's going through, are you contesting that?
Yeah. I mean, I believe it's got to be mistaken.
The amount of water?
The amount of water that I'm being paying for, yes.
So our policy requires that you have, provide some evidence of that, not that you just don't believe it. So do we have... So do we have, provide any evidence?
What evidence can I provide?
That there's an issue with the meter?
It was an issue with the meter. If there was an issue with the meter 15 years ago from since 2005, I cannot be one right now.
Well, she's actually, what I, my understanding is that they're not saying that there's an issue with the meter, but there was an issue with the rate that was charged on the usage, which is entirely unrelated to the meter.
I don't understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so you have a meter that's just like an odometer, one, two, three, four, five, and over here, they say for every one, you have to multiply it by 40 cents or whatever, right? So it's the usage times the rate gives you the cost. If the meter is right, but then you multiply it by the wrong rate, then the end result is incorrect.
By the wrong rate from since 2005? But she's just finished saying, this rate they charged this morning.
Yeah.
If they would have charged me from, if they're saying it was a mistake from since 2005, and I've been getting charged since 2005, I don't see no problem with that. I will pay this and I'll keep my march on.
Yeah, well, you've been, it sounds like you've been.
But that's not what she said, as far as I understand.
That's exactly what she's saying, that you've been undercharged.
This bill, it's only from September 2022 until September 2023.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not just like I'm getting paid like a couple of hundred dollars more than what I've been paying when the meter wasn't reading right. You're talking about almost $7,000 more. It's got to be a lot of uses of water.
Sounds like you got a lot of usage, but the fact is, you benefited from it. But I did a quick analysis, a quick add-up, just based on the, what was actually charged, the average of what you've actually been charged versus what you've actually used over that period, and it comes out to almost $400,000 over the 20-year period.
Why, you gotta, if I gotta pay $400,000 on water for 20 years now?
Well, the fact is.
I can afford that property.
That money did have to be paid for.
Yeah, but that's not the question here right now. The question is right now, is this bill, the 8,000 and some dollars, almost $9,000, is that from since 2005 or is it just from last year?
Just last year.
So, I mean, look at it. Again, it's what I'm just trying to say. If it would have been a mistake there before, it's got to be a mistake now. I'm having two people living on that house. How did I'm going to have all the usage for this water? I'm having a landscaping company on the back, then I just mentioned to Mrs. Brown, and I'm honestly, if I would have been using this amount of water and I know, or if I would have been having a leak on the property, I wouldn't be here complaining.
Well, that's why I'm asking. You're not.
I washed my truck last year, three times last year. I mean, I can, I can come up with this morning.
Please allow me to finish the question, okay? So if you're not contesting the usage, are you saying that what was actually going through the meter, the meter was incorrect?
I'm not saying it wasn't or wasn't. I don't know.
Neither do we, and we have no evidence there's an issue with the meter.
If they take that 20 years to find out the meter is incorrect, it's got to be somebody's not right, working on the right department. If you need to find out 20 years, there is a mistake on my meter, that means somebody's not doing their job right.
The meter was fine. It sounds like, or ultimately fine.
I'm just saying somebody's not doing their job right.
Problem was actually the fact of the charge.
It's not my fault. I've been paying for what I'm getting billed, and I never complained about it.
Yeah.
If somebody's not doing their job correctly, it's not my fault. But right now, I think at this time, I mean, it's got to be a mistake. I'm not saying it wasn't a mistake since 2005, but even, I mean, if I'm going to pay from since 2005 up until now, this amount of money, how many people, I'd just like you to explain to me some, or the board can explain to me some, how many people in Stoughton, maybe with houses, they probably have like six, seven people on the family living on, how many people installed and pays this amount of water? That's what I would like to understand.
That is entirely irrelevant, because people have different usages of.
Well, I don't believe it's much often, it's been done much.
I remember a $12,000 water bill.
Well, it has to be a big usage. Like I said, sir, I have two people living on the house.
Well, I have a question on that, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Do you own the garage out back?
Yes, sir, I do.
You have a water connection going to that?
There's a water connection, Dan. We're using that water most of every day just to wash our hands after work and stuff. I don't even have a bathroom. I have a portable that I rented it. And like I said, I wash my trucks once in a while, okay? I washed my trucks last year three times. So I washed my trucks.
Madam Chair, for clarification, so I understand, if I understand this correctly, this was an error on our meter for the years past? No? Phil, give me the.
Mr. McNulty?
Yeah, Phil, give me the dumbed-down version here, so I can kind of understand this, because it's jumping all over the place.
Yes, it is.
We're playing the blame game versus the factual data. I want to know what's going on.
We're talking about a meter that was in error from 2005 to 2022. We're not here to really talk about that. That was a mistake to the owner's benefit. It was reading low, but it was the way it was set up in the first place. Set that aside, because that's not in dispute here. That was to the owner's advantage, because he didn't have to pay the correct rate on that water. What we're talking about is from 2022 to 2023, a one-year period, where the new Neptune meters was put in at this residence, Pearl Street. And there was nothing wrong with the meter, this meter that we put in. It was the reading, it didn't come back to the office. So that's, so when we went to change out that reading device, we actually got the reading off the meter that was not delivering the data. But the meter itself was working for one year, and that's the amount we're talking about.
Okay, so this is the second meter that you put in, the one that was, that wasn't delivering the data.
Not communicating.
We're not even talking about that.
The meter itself was good.
This is just the second one, that you have all the data to back that up?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, I'm not done. With regard to the property, it has irrigation. It is an irrigation, you know, a landscaping company with the ability to hydro seed and wash trucks. I'm not saying that's what you do, but I'm saying the potential is there for heavy water use.
Okay, but the fact is, we're only talking about the first meter, we're not talking about that, because it wasn't putting the data, okay? So we're even forgetting that, and we're forgetting everything back to 2005, okay? So that's not an issue. We shouldn't be talking about 2005, we should be talking about the last year. This is a meter that's working correctly, that's giving us back the data, and this is a dollar amount.
Yes.
Correct? So that meter is working properly, and it's the same figures and data that comes out of my home, and I pay my water bill. Okay, am I correct at that?
Yes.
That's correct. And finally, when the data is communicated to the office, which it is now to this day, it shows consistently high water use as the previous year.
Okay.
So it's confirmed.
Okay. All right, so I've learned what I need to make a decision. Thank you very much for the clarity.
I have a question. This is regarding the meter. This is a new meter that was put in in year 2022. What indication do you have that it is operating correctly? It just, it just sounds kind of speculative for me, just knowing that if it's only two people living in the home, and what's a reasonable amount of water usage, it wouldn't be, what was that number, 44,000? It just. Well, that's the dollar amount. I'm referring to usage. So how do you know when a meter is not correct, is incorrects, to say it correctly?
When we put in, we have 9,000 meters, so the rate of communication failure is very low. It's less than, you know, 1 in 500. This happens to be one of them. That's just the communication piece. The meter itself is working. We can go there and read it and get the reading, as we, as the old way was done. Going down this road of how many people live there, how many bedrooms, you know, there could be nobody there and the water's running. So you could actually say there's nobody there, but there's water use, and that does happen, when pipes break due to freezing and so forth. So it's really, you know, I always say that I don't live there, I don't know, and there's 9,000 other accounts, I don't know what they do. All we can say is, we see the, when an account is set up correctly, we can, we can view it every day, we can graph it, and we can see the water use. And it signals us, to us, whether there's, you know, continuous leaks, or just, or we can just monitor the daily and weekly, monthly, whatever timeframe we want to look at, we can see the water use. I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but.
Thank you, that answered.
We can see the water use on every account.
You can see the water use. So I did see the, based on the backup documentation, I saw how you were monitoring it.
Yes.
Every day, basically, every hour, I did see that. Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Follow-up. I forget what year it was before Phil moved down to Central Street. I got a tour of that, that facility, on how these meters work, and got the opportunity to see it with a family member recently, and Phil will remember that one. And you can see the meter count. I mean, you could see a slow day, a fast day. On that property, Phil, is there two water meters? Does the, the water that goes to the garage, does that go through that same meter? It's one meter for both buildings?
Okay, all right. So I'll just add to that, I mean, the overall purpose of having this, one of the overall important pieces to the new metering program, is to recognize these high usage, whether they're on purpose, we can check them and make sure it's on purpose, or if it's unknown to the customer, that they have a leak, a leaky toilet, or a frozen spigot in the back that they didn't notice, that it broke and there's water, we can pick that up on a daily basis. So that's, to try to get it, you know, to try to get the problem resolved in day three rather than day 90, is one of the goals.
And I've seen that firsthand, so I, you know, I know it works. And maybe this might be an issue where the property owner may consider having a separate meter put in for the garage as well, so they'll know where that use is totaling from. You know, I mean, if something happens, that there's somebody taking water out of the garage end, or if the, if the family, the residential up front, you know, who knows?
Is that practice to have two, two meters? Is that a practice? I have never heard of that before.
We prefer to stay away from it. It's called sub-metering, where you, you have your primary meter, and then you have, you know, a second meter out to a garage or something. You know, it just complicates things.
Right. Thank you very much, Phil. Yes, Mr. Rego.
Well, I don't know if I'm correctly right, but I believe this is not the first meter we've been having replaced in all these years. I think it was another meter before this one. But anyway, so all I'm just asking is, is any way we can try to work on this together and try to see if it's something wrong with that meter? That's all I'm just asking. Because I think this bill is outrageous. And like I said, if I would have been using the water, if I would have been having a leak on that property, I wouldn't be here complaining. I think this is outrageous. Matter of fact, I have a shut-off, then I keep them, going towards the building on the back. It's turned off all winter, and yesterday, actually, I don't even know if it's, what these new digital meters, if it's normal to do that. Yesterday, I turned the water on because I had to clean the salt of some of my trucks, and I was standing near the meter, we've been using the water, we didn't see no numbers on the meter at all, and after a couple of hours, started to come up all kinds of numbers on and stuff. I mean, I actually took some pictures, but I don't know if it's normal or not to do that. All I'm just asking is, before you're making a decision, can we try to work on this together and see if it is a problem there before I get in charge for this? That's all I'm just asking. Because if it was been a mistake since 2005, it can be another mistake right now, and I'm going to pay high penalties for this without not being necessary. That's all I'm just asking.
Madam Chair.
If somebody can go by, look at it, try to see if it's a problem or not, then we all can work on this together. And if it is no problems at all, I've been paying, I have no other choice, then I'm going to keep my eyes on. Because like I said, it's only two people living on that house. Sprinkler system, like I told Mrs. Brown, I have a sprinkler system there. Last year, practically, we had the system off because there was so much rain, we didn't need the system on. And system only runs like four to five months a year, it doesn't run through the whole year. If I'm going to pay this money as an average of $8,000, almost $9,000 a year, that's outrageous. I got to sell the property, because I'm not going to be able to afford, because that's practically what I'm paying for property taxes.
First, Mr. McCrisky, then Vice Chair Cavie.
Just a clarification, then. We're talking about 2005, that's not an issue here. The property owner isn't being charged going back to 2005. So let's just keep it based on facts here, is that Mr. McNulty stated, in the past couple of years, they had one meter that was not working. We're not even talking about that meter, correct, Phil? So we're not even talking about that meter. We're talking about the meter, the second meter that was installed, that is working properly. We're talking about just that amount. And that's 8,000?
8,826.
Mr. McNulty, is that a correct amount? Okay, and you're saying that meter works? Okay, so I just want to focus on, you know, again, you know, that we're talking about that one year. We have a meter that's working. I mean, Phil, I mean, is there a way of testing those meters without pulling them all out? I've never seen this before. That's why I'm asking these questions.
You can simply run five gallons into a five-gallon pail and see if it records five gallons.
So it's that simple to test one?
Yep.
All right, so why don't we just go down with the damn five-gallon bucket, test it, and we'll know it's working, or not working? And if it's not working, you come back here. If it is working, we just, we just take a vote that says, unless there comes up with data with the resident, with you, when you do that test, five gallons and read five gallons, let the property owner see it. If he still decides he wants to come back here, it's going to be pretty tough to convince me otherwise. You know, if the meter's working, we're only talking about the year, we're not talking about 2005, we're not talking about multiple meters. One meter failed, we're not charging you for that.
I'm not saying.
So, no, no, but you've, you've mentioned 2005 several times, and we're not talking about.
It was a mistake, Dan.
Right, but that's not an issue at this hearing, sir. All right, the issue of the hearing.
About the issue from 2005? I'm talking, all I just said was, if it couldn't be a mistake since 2005, and nobody never noticed that, it can be another mistake again, and nobody never noticed.
Well, so it's a simple thing to do. It's a very simple thing to do. It sounds like we're going to beat this to death, and.
It brings the meter for five gallons, it's impossible for two people to waste $8,000.
You don't know what else was there. So I mean, all we're talking about is a meter. We're going to, we're going to, I believe, and I would say that if somebody supports it, that we do that last test, we make sure the property owner's there, we run the water through into a bucket, we let the property owner see the meter. If the meter's wrong, well, it sounds like we got to go back and take another bite at the apple. But if the meter's working, it's not an argument here.
I'm not trying to be rude with you, sir.
No, I'm.
Last, my, my meter's a special meter, and everybody else who lives in Stoughton, it's a different meter than mine's. Because it's no way two people on this one is going to waste that money.
Well, I'll tell you, I told you, I know, I've seen a $12,000 water bill, okay? I have a family member, sir, a family member of mine that had that happen. Okay, so it happens. They couldn't, they couldn't.
Because something is wrong, yeah, it can't happen.
Well, again, you know, we're, we're sitting here trying to make judgment on something that is, it's got to be based on data, okay? And a family member of mine argued, but then understood what we had, you know, why, if if we just go giving money back and saying, you know, we'd have people in here, five a night. You know, so we have to trust the equipment we have, the people we pay. And I don't have a problem. I, you should know if that meter's working, I agree. So you're going to be there, they'll run the water, you can watch the meter, and if it goes over five gallons to fill up the five gallon bucket, then we got egg on our face. If the meter says five gallons for a five gallon bucket, well, it sounds like we, it's a very simple decision for our board to make. So, so when, when the board's ready for a motion, I'd be ready to make one.
Before we move on, Vice Chair Cavey had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I would just like to add that, I mean, this is not my, my field. This is not, I'm not going to pretend to know things I don't know. Okay? However, I've been on the water, in sewer subcommittee for six years now, so I've, I've had a chance to see a lot of other people who had issues. And then people from our water department have seen probably 1,000 times more than, than I ever could. So I have seen, in fact, that there are leaks that can occur, especially if you have an irrigation system, underground, where the water's just coming out. So the fact that nobody ever turned on any, you know, a, a sink, doesn't matter. We have toilets that can be leaky. I think just recently, we saw, we saw an abatement request for several thousand dollars for somebody who wasn't even in the state when, when, when they, when they got their, their bill. But they left, and the toilets were running, and it didn't matter if zero people were in the home because water was going through the meter. So if we determine that there is no issue with the water meter itself, then just, this is really just friendly advice, is to find yourself a plumber, try to find those leaks. Because if nobody's using this water, it's coming out someplace else.
Can I answer your question?
Okay.
About the leaks you mentioned? So I'm there every day because I work with the guys every day, so I'm on the property every day. And I have the sprinklers run on the morning. And if it were to be a leak on the sprinklers, first of all, on the sprinklers, which if it were to be a leak on the sprinklers the whole year long, I believe I would have this water going. You can't, if it were to be a leak on the sprinklers, it wouldn't be no pressure on the sprinklers. My sprinklers have been working fine all the time. And if it were to be a leak on the sprinklers, I would have been seeing the water coming out of the ground. And it wouldn't be a leak there. I, I knew, and I wouldn't be here complaining, believe me. I know for a fact, I know.
If the water's going through the meter, it's going through the meter.
Then I don't have a leak on the sprinklers.
Yeah, if it's, if it's going, it's through the meter, after that, after it goes through the meter, it's your problem. So whatever you do with it, if you pour it out into, into the, into your yard, you're welcome to do that. You're, you can do whatever you want. But if we determine that there is no issue with the meter, then the problem is inside of your property. And just as, as, don't do anything, it's not my business. But if you, if you're, if you want to solve that problem, you know, it might be helpful to have somebody to try to track down where that water is actually going. Because if it's going in and nobody's turning on any faucets, you know, where's it going?
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. So I, I was really an advocate, oh, yeah, I just want to say this one thing, Mr. Gito. Advocate of the, the new meters. And you've said this before, but I want to hear you just explain to me again. As soon as you noticed, with the, with the implementation of the new meter, you saw that the usage was up, you outreach to the owner and by, by letter and telephone call, but he didn't respond to you, is that correct? Or he did respond to you? And then, Mr. Gito.
He did respond to, he did respond to my letter. That's how we ended up getting in to his property and getting an actual read off of the meter. So that's what this big bill comes from, is because it's an actual read, visual. So he did let the bills go a little bit without responding, the regular bills, but he did respond to my letter. So that read that we got was an actual read, visual read off the meter.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gito.
I'm looking at something here that, that I believe came from the water department that has date, type, more info, reading, usage, prior balance, transaction amount, and balance. Do you have that page for three, top date was 3/18/2021?
Yes.
As I read this, coming down to 11/15/2022, I see readings amounts as follows. Now, those are readings. And then I see 48, 44827. Is that a reading?
That is his usage.
That is a what?
Use, his usage. So the reading from the...
No, the, the usage is on two columns over.
Right. So the reason why it shows up as the reading and the usage because it's put into the system, this is the read that we got off of the meter. So the reading is zero, and the usage was 44827. So it's showing you, it doesn't start off as a zero like that, it's just showing you the actual reading of the 44827, that was his usage.
I absolutely do not understand that. Absolutely do not understand that. So how did 44827 get on that meter?
Because it started at zero.
When the numbers were, were steady at 8373?
That's no usage. So that's why he had so many 8373s, is because if you look in the usage column, there's zeros.
Yes.
So that's when he was getting those bills that said no usage. So that's when I, we, he responded to the letter. So we went in and we changed the meter, that's when the transmitter wasn't sending over us.
No, you changed the meter on 9/20/22.
Yes.
That was 11/15/2022.
Right.
Was the date for the, for the first charge.
Right.
I don't understand this.
Hold on, we have the date of the next meter change out.
Somebody can help me if, to understand it.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Maybe I could help a bit, Lou, and I'm not going to pretend to understand this because I get confused over it as well. Isn't that 84...
If you're confused, don't add to the confusion unless you can help.
I'll try not to, sir.
Okay.
Isn't the 84 the minimum charge for no usage?
No, so he, when we first changed out his meter, he was, his first meter that we were not getting any reads on, you have the same page I do. See on 6/22 through 9/22, his reading went from eight...
From when?
6/22 to 9/22. I believe it's on the page that you have.
Where is that? These are, these are numbers that you wrote down.
These are numbers that were given to me off of a visual read, off of a card that when we sent the guy there to change the meter. These are actual figures. So that equals 13,900 cubic feet of water. This was the first Neptune meter that we were not receiving the reads on, so he was not billed for that yet. So then on 9/22, we went there again, and we put this second meter in, which we're talking about. This is the meter in question. Through nine...
On nine, 6/22 to 9/22.
Yep, so he was billed.
There was a, there was a usage of 13,900 cubic feet.
Yes.
Now, but you changed the meter...
On 9/2.
On 9/2.
Yep. So 9/22 through 9/823 is all of those zeros that you see in the usage column?
Yes.
Okay? So when we went there and we got the read off of that meter, he started off at zero for the new meter, and the read was 3927. So the 3927 plus that 13,900 is that usage that he was billed of 44827.
So you went in and looked at the meter?
Yes. We, we, yes, we have a card of it, it's in your, it's in your packet, too.
So between... Just a minute. Between 11/15 and, I guess, 8/15/23, the, you had a transmission problem in that period of time? So you had to change the transmitter? Is that what?
We changed out everything.
I'm, I'm trying to get some sense of...
We changed the meter and the transmitter, we changed everything out.
Again, on, after...
Yep.
After 8/15/23?
So the first change out took place on 9/22.
Okay.
Okay. The second change out, we, the meter, back it up a little bit. The first meter after the whole 2005 issue, okay? The first meter was put in, and we were not receiving reads, okay? Then on 9/22, we put another meter with a transmitter in. And that's where that 30,000 cubic feet came from, when we went there and we got a read off of it.
9/22...
Yep, through 9/823.
It says new meter.
Yes.
And that's the first new meter or the second meter? The second new meter. Was there another meter put in on, on 8/15, or, or between 8/15 and...
Those are the billing dates that you're looking at.
I'm sorry?
The date column that you're looking at, those are their billing date, like the date that the actual bill went out. So the use, the usage column is pretty much what you want to look at. Those are the dates of the bill.
When was the last new meter put in again?
9/22.
Okay. So then from 9/22 to when it changed, you got the same reading at, to create this, this chart, is that correct? I'm looking at a chart that says 8373, a whole series of those.
Yep. That's when we couldn't get a read off of his meter.
Okay. That's, that's the question that I asked.
Can I clarify that? We can get a read off the meter. It's not transmitting.
It's not transmitting. So you went in while these things were not transmitting and got these other readings that you wrote down at the bottom of the page. 8/22 to 9/22, 13,900.
Yes. Mm-hmm, yes.
So you were sending bills out of zero...
No usage, yep.
Until you got the, got to 44,827?
Yes. That's the 13,900 plus the 30,927.
I think you ought to do what Ms. McCrisky said, and I think we ought to think about who pays for what when, after this is over.
Can I direct one more time, one last question?
Yes, you certainly will.
Braun said the last meter was put in on 2022?
September 2, 2022.
The last meter was put in, that was on 2023, a few months ago. I don't know...
That's, that's...
That's the last meter we put in, then you called me, then we made it at, in a meeting to meet the, Stephen there to go change the meters. That was on 2023, not on 2022. I mean, there is a confusion here. The last meter was being put in, if I'm not mistaken, was sometime on September or sometime on late August of 2023, not 2022. Some kind of a confusion here.
That meter had...
Well, I mean, definitely, I know for a fact, I met Stephen Serra a few months ago to meet him to go replace the meter, that was on 2023. Late August or beginners of, of September. I know that for a fact. That was on 2022. I mean, which it's not, I'm not saying that's the, the concern about what we're talking about, but that's when the meter was replaced, and on 2023, not 2022. I know that for a fact 100%. I met Stephen Serra there. That's when I got in contact with you, and that's when I received this letter from you on late 2023. You sent me this letter, correct?
So it was multiple times that we had new meters? So we had an old meter on September, from June 2, 2022 to September 2, 2022. Then we put in the Neptune meter, September 2, 2022. And then you put in another meter in September 8, 2023, is that right, Mr. Gito?
I don't know.
Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes.
That's correct. So it was three times meters were... Mr. Gito, is that what you're saying, too? I think it's three times.
Well, that's what it seems to be. I mean, I, I'm having a very difficult time.
Can we get a motion just to have a test done? I think we need to follow what Mr. McCrisky suggested. I agree with you, Gito.
I, I would like to have a clearer chronology of this and a clearer chronology as to why, if we were getting these other readings back in 2022, those did not turn up in a bill. I mean, why do, why look at the meter, get the numbers, and not translate that, that into something? I don't understand some of these things. So maybe we could all go back to our corners and get the five gallon bucket done and think about this as to who knew what and when, and how people could react to things.
I agree with that. Can someone translate that into a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
I make a motion that we had struck the water department to meet as soon as practicable with the property owner. Can't believe I'm going to make a motion like this, that they bring a five gallon bucket with them.
Well, or some, that they measure the...
Whatever way you would do it. Actually, it's a very simple way to do that. We have weights and measures now, that the water department could go down to the weights and measures and get the proper gallonage that is done to certify gas pumps and so forth. And we use that measuring device to measure the water that goes through the meter.
Or however they choose.
Or however they choose to, I don't have a problem. I mean, but this way here, somebody will say, well, the five gallon bucket wasn't full. So it's, I mean, we fill up a measuring device, so...
Madam Chair, excuse me, I'm so sorry. In addition to that, we'll put all this confusing data to lose point in a chronology of events in one chart.
Thank you.
That's the amended motion, and we accept it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So we will...
We also need a motion to continue the public hearing until, until after that test is... I, I believe we also need a motion to continue the public hearing until after that test is completed to continue our work.
So may it, Madam, second, whatever, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to close the public hearing?
We can't, we have to continue it.
Oh, continuation of the public hearing? Thank you very much.
Is somebody going to contact me?
Yes. It would be your...
I'm just like to let you know, I'm going to be away tomorrow for two weeks. I'm going to go to Portugal, and I'll be back in two weeks. Is that possible to do it after that?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we, we'll, we'll work with your schedule.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we?
I just wanted to let you know, in case if they try to contact me, I'm not going to be around.
Yeah, no, no. Why don't you call the water department when you get back?
Do you want me to get in contact with you, Mrs. Braun?
Yep, yep.
All right, thank you.
And please, please enjoy your trip.
Thank you, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you. Thank you.
On the lease, Madam Chair?
Wait just a minute. Oh, just a minute. So our next item number seven, Ms. McCrisky, you're taking the lead on that, correct?
Madam Chair, I would, this is the liquor.
This is Andre's liquor.
Yes. Madam Chair, where the, where the property owner wasn't able to get proper notice to be here, I would ask that we postpone this to our next agenda.
Okay. Be cut.
Or next door, whatever one it fits on. I mean, once, once he's been properly notified.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And moving to item number eight, which is the Lucius Clapp Memorial Building contract renewal. Oh, yes, Mr....
Take their conversation somewhere else.
Excuse me, Mr. McNulty, can you please? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gito. Okay. We're on the contract of Lucius Clapp. And I was going to ask, are you as chair of the Historical Society and you as on the board, or which, are you presenting the contract to us?
No, I was going to ask as well to, to table that, because there were some things that I believe need to be reviewed with counsel before we act on that.
Good. I, I agree with you.
I would concur. I would agree.
So that's my, I'd say that's my motion, to table the lease...
Yeah.
Till suitable time that I can discuss with the town manager and counsel a couple of things that are...
Mr. Gito, was that your second? Was that, were you seconding?
Absolutely.
All right.
With pleasure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that was...
Motion to approve the minutes of February 6, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to...
To adjourn.
Oh, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good evening, everyone, and I will see you next time. Bye-bye.